It is. Dan got Gary Wayman sent the agenda. Thanks.
I love this road this morning at my house.
What's it? Oh, yeah. Yeah, right around the beach or the after. Is this the hot seat?
That's the hot seat. Got your name on it for right now.
I'm a bit old, not a lot of firewood.
Feel it?
I'm just not.
Not those muscles.
Not used to use those muscles.
The vibration that comes out in your.
It is, yeah, and freeze is.
Getting soft in your old age or what?
I think I am. Yes. You're not feeling it. I. And I'm used and I've got found myself on the sit.
Oh, you got your. I was bringing copies to you last. At the high one.
Oh, sorry.
I didn't see the front page.
I didn't believe anything when they got here.
Well, you guys fill it out.
Yeah, because they changed, so, yeah.
I was gonna stop up after this and.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, um, yeah, I.
Dan, did you need one?
Sure. Thank you.
Um, I got mine.
Tracking this down.
Hard.
Huh?
Tracking this down.
Yeah, well.
Thanks.
Because I had to go in and re-enter everybody's and the numbers in the forms were not. So I had to do my best guess.
There's no.
And I want, I wanted to write, so.
Thank you, Lynn.
Well, then we better send her. And again, and so, yeah, okay. So.
I'm. Jamie.
Um. Yeah, I, well. Um, no, I think we can have a, I don't think. I think haven't. We aren't at our current for. And, uh.
Maybe.
Yeah, maybe haven't finished if we haven't. Have one green and she would have been off. And then where. If we have, if we have for staff. But.
Well, that day that I get. Fourteen percent.
That's your chance for. All right, all right, thank you. Yep, appreciate it.
Show you up there.
Yeah.
Morning, Ben. Um, no.
Is it using muscle? Yeah, yeah, I could, I just told her to, I can get my medical. I think control, but if I take the call and mark out any, I don't want something to be disrespectful.
It's not something I sell.
It's not personal.
You really call us.
Yeah, so I think we're squared away.
All those that saw too, please stand and pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let everyone know that this meeting is being recorded. If you do not wish to be recorded, you should leave the meeting now. I called a meeting to order with first five month agenda. Dan Larson is budgeting more than Dan.
It's happening. A week ago, but I got some more here for new music.
Take one, so mine is buried in his stack somewhere.
That's.
Yeah, I had them all last.
Thank you.
Week. Uh, I'll give back.
What's that?
His budgets, stock that I had.
You have yours?
Yeah. Oh.
I know what happened.
Go ahead.
So, uh, pretty straightforward. I, obviously, the fields of anything with payroll or anything like that aren't. Yeah.
Sure.
Um, but everything else held the line, uh, it's the same as last year. Um. Don't believe. There's any increases. When he finds a place where I'm mistaken and I forgot about one. By all means. Call me out on it, but I don't believe so. Um. Obviously, I don't know if budget's tight this year. And there was any sucking the belt, so I would. Right across. I think last year I made mention of this.
So I always ask this question, just so the community is aware, when they see the article in the paper about what you're returning over here and the cumulative amount of that over the last several years. Would you take them, take us through that again so that you can make clear how that happens and why that happens and what does that mean numbers wise?
Yeah, absolutely. So, um, I don't, I have the exact amount, not really, but, um, over the last ten years, um, we've been able to return on average of about two hundred thousand or so out of the budget, spend higher or lower than that for cumulative about two, little over two million over the last ten years. Um, so the reason we have always done that, um, and the reason that's been able to happen is in large part because it's been budgeted, um, this board or previous boards and this board have always budgeted accordingly that if we have a situation, we're not scrambling to work, we're not come up with that money because of the unpredictable nature of the business. And so then also within that, um, uh, part of that extras also, we are very careful what we spend and we don't spend what we don't need. And we've always looked at it as that money will get rolled back and with an expectation that it'll get rolled back, um, if it's not needed. And that has also been part of the reason that I was able to hold the numbers like they are. Obviously, the, the rollback won't be as much with, uh, you know, holding the numbers the same, but, um, you know, with prices going up and numbers staying the same, it'll obviously close that gap to a degree, so.
And other departments don't over budget by two hundred, shouldn't say over budget, but don't add that budget by two hundred thousand because the emergencies that come at the law enforcement warrant that. The auditor's office, for instance, wouldn't have any emergency come up that's unforeseen. I think not. So that's kind of the nature of why that happens every year.
You can't, can't legally amend the budget in June without chance of it getting denied. And to do a budget amendment in May usually means you need to know by the end of April or early May. And so that just doesn't leave time if something comes up. So that's why instead of waiting and seeing if there's an emergency and trying to amend, then maybe not having time to do it, we just pad it a little bit in case there is, then we can just turn it back.
It's basically a savings account in case we need it.
Yeah.
Do we get any reimbursement on the twenty eighty with Kelmer auction?
Yes, we do. Um, that's in here, but it's about sixty thousand a year that we get for that. What that's based on is fifty percent of the pay and benefit package of the top paid deputy. So whatever, whoever, you know, wherever they're at in the echelon, the top big deputy takes, take whatever that number is divided in half and how that's come up, come up with that is there's a, we're not based an hour per week or per month, we're on an annual basis of a thousand forty hours a year, which is, um, if you break that down.
Sixty thousand is what.
Yeah, I mean, so, yeah, and that thousand forty hours are break down to twenty hours a week.
Sounds good.
Between the two, should be on the revenue side.
Revenue side.
Avenue side, page side, top line.
Yeah, and there's, it might not, and the reason I, that might not directly reflect that number is because different things that if Kelmer buys something or we buy something, we reconcile that. And so that comes off or adds to whatever that number is. So it's, it's not reflective of the exact number and that's why. Um, but, uh, that equates to twenty hours a week, which would be half of what a deputy would be, and so that's how we come up with that.
Are you faced with retirements and recruiting issues this year?
Uh, we are faced with retirements. Um, we have two openings, uh, right now. And, uh, we were lucky enough that we had a pretty decent slate of applicants. Again, we're still that anomaly in the state, to be honest with you.
That's for deputies. How about jailers?
Jailers, it's the tale of two cities. Um, complete opposite when it comes to jails. We've had, uh, some open jail positions for quite some time. And, uh, we're very much struggling to fill. Um, retainment was an issue as well in the jail. We, it's, it's tough. It's, it's a tough and unique job. And, uh, a lot of people get into it and it's not for them. And no matter how much we try to kind of explain that at the beginning, that understand what you're getting into, sometimes you gotta just do it. And, uh, so that is become difficult. And also, to be fair, on the jail side as well, we have, uh, several state regulations of male female ratio and how, what we gotta have. And so that, not necessarily ratio, that's not true. Um, not accurate, I should say. I, it's more, we have to have a female on if we have a female jail, um, in. So that becomes a little difficult for staffing. So we gotta kind of navigate who are, where applicants are and whether we can hire them or not, given the current status of our, of our roster. Um, we're working on some other things that I'm not, I don't think I should probably get into right now, but ways to kind of resolve that. But those are kind of, uh, works in progress to make that a little bit easier. Um, but yeah, the jail has been difficult, um, so far on the deputy side, we've, we've still been, uh, enjoying, uh, hopefully a good reputation, uh, and we've been continuing to get good applicants. Uh, right now, we have it narrowed down to, uh, five experienced certified applicants for two jobs. And we had many more people apply that we, um, did not move along in the process. Narrowed it down for the civil service commission to not have to vet so many of them.
How long has it been since you found it necessary to send this, an African or a new hire through the academy?
Believe it's been close to fifty years. So that's been, uh, huge, huge advantage and huge, huge cost savings when you look at training, academy costs and all that, um, to be figured on a state average anywhere between fifty and seventy thousand by the time you really have them up and going. So that's been huge. And that's a number that recently the Sheriff's and Deputies Association, um, put out there as kind of a standard number and that includes any, uh, um, training time, salary during training and just where you're not getting full benefit out of them, all by that, so.
Should we issue a thank you card to decor?
I don't know if we will receive. Yeah, so, but yeah, that's, that's been a lot of it. And, uh, you know, we, we've, um, hired deputies from Cresco, Howard County and Chickasaw County to.
This is, this is just a curiosity question. Is it fair to say that the difference between serving in a municipal police force versus the difference between the career as a rural sheriff, uh, deputy, there's a significant difference?
Yeah, they're, they're two different jobs. I don't think a lot of people, um, look at it that way. I think most people look at it if someone has a badge and they have a uniform, it's the same job. And in fairness, when somebody has an emergency and they need someone to show up, that is what they care about and I understand that. And, uh, I would feel the same way if it was my emergency. But just in the dynamics of make sure it's online, just in the dynamics of, um, what the job entails, they're just two different jobs. And like, uh, we talk, everybody has, can decide what fits them better and what they prefer to do, but we've been able to enjoy a lot of people wanting to be deputies. And so that's, it's worked to our benefit.
In your budget, do you have potential changes in the funding and reimbursements from community social services? Do you anticipate that that's gonna happen?
Uh, yeah, you know, with the reworking of the, you know, and I know the, I don't remember who just won the bid for county social services and all that, but that's gonna be a big deal depending how that shakes out. And Mark, redirect me if I'm not, so I'm not hitting the question right, but I think what Mark's getting at is right now, um, a lot of our mental health, um, um, prescription funding and, uh, and the mental health transports and all those kind of things are covered by county social services. So, um, say someone would, now I'm not, I'm just talking involun, yeah, involuntary, um, hospitalizations are typically called committals, technically emergency hospitalizations. Those transport costs and different, um, funding costs, um, they were all covered by county social services. And we don't know what the future of that looks like. And that's my understanding. Yes. I don't know that they, it's for sure that they won't, but it's a good possibility they won't. And I look at Mark as he's, he sits on that board and it's, that is gonna impact, impact our budget. It's gonna have a significant, serious impact.
You think they're gonna push that onto the counties?
They're talking about it. That's, they're talking about it pretty hard, yeah.
That's the first nod.
That's, that seems to be. That seems to be the direction they're going, um.
I'm real.
Yep.
Yep.
So.
Any legislative agenda issues that the public should be aware of to get behind and support that would help us at the look at the county level?
Well, in my opinion, yeah, there's, well, it would be that as far as how that's being reworked and how everything, how everything's coming back to the counties. And I think also, um, I, I think it was maybe, uh, you know, you guys know far more about this than me, but I don't, this, this wouldn't be just for the sheriff's office. I think it would be for all counties for the budget as a whole. Is the way, uh, property taxes are being, um, being handled. I mean, puts the board of supervisors in one heck of a pinch. It just seems like it's a reallocation of funds rather than a savings of funds. The way I see it.
More in the C reps because at this morning about upcoming stuff for this year, so.
Yeah, yeah, so, uh, no, and I think all boards across the state, and I know this one especially is, uh, in really, everything's coming. There's only so many ways you can rework things when the, when the numbers aren't there. So, yeah, I think those two, I realize that's not directly to sheriff's office. And I'm maybe getting out of my swim lane a little bit to bring that up, but it all, it all works together.
Works together, yes.
So far, it's been falling on deaf ears and it's unfortunate.
But the legislature started folks today in Des Moines.
So I'd like to see, and I, I understand where they're going, but I, I don't think it's effective. I think it's just shifting the problem. I think so. It's doing, I don't think it's fixing anything, just shifting it. So.
Eighty-five percent of the counties are gonna suffer and the top few are gonna be fine because they've got the resources.
Yeah, both. That's exactly.
And, yeah, we get penalized for growth, so.
Yeah, that's, that's what baffles, that's what baffles me. I agree with you, Mark. If you get penalized for, for growth, it's, I, I I don't know all the ins and outs of it, so I should probably be careful what I say, but it, it on the surface, it doesn't, it seems odd.
Voted to pass House file. Also don't know the ins and outs of it. That was the problem.
Yeah.
And they could change it, but they're committed to the five year period.
My every year, it's a new session.
The, as our auditor explained to us on the board up here the other day, the amount of increase of funds the county receives in the general fund for this year because of House file, seven eighteen is eighty-two thousand eight hundred dollars to go through the entire county for any inflation, wage increases, COLA adjustments or additions to budgets.
Yeah. Yep, and, uh, said I I have my opinion on that file, but I'll.
We all do.
Yeah. Um, I.
Interesting to find out. Everybody, pretty much everybody there is just.
Yeah, I, I don't understand. I don't understand how that, yeah, and, and how does that line up with local controls? What I, I struggle to grab my brain around and understand.
Is anybody having questions for naming on this budget?
Our responsibility is public safety. One of our primary responsibilities is public safety. We, we just can't let it affect law enforcement or road departments or things of that nature, which are primary.
Well, just like in the, the little op-ed thing that I put out about the budgeting. Taxes are a necessary reality to the services that people want, need, enjoy. Um, and, you know, we can have that debate within how they're spent, but we gotta have the money there to begin with or we can't even debate that. And so, uh, I agree with you a hundred percent. Uh, you guys are in a tough spot. You know, there's no secret. I brought it up before and you know, it's coming up again this year that our deputies are, you know, the lower end of the pay scale and or they've made some changes and de-unionized and all that. They've got out of the union and all that. It's a, it's a tough hill in front of us, how, you know, to get everything to, get her, get everything to fit together so we can do what we need to do. And that's partly why I kept the budget where I did, um.
I think I can speak to all of us. We appreciate that.
Well, I'm, I'll speak for all of us that we all understand the task you guys have in front of you. And, uh, we appreciate you guys continuing to work with us. I feel that, uh, we have been supported by this board, um, financially and otherwise. And, uh, yeah, I thank you guys. You got a, you got a tough job ahead of you. Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Good luck in jail.
Yeah, yeah, yep. Yeah, speaking of budgets, this is very cheap. So, but, uh, no, thank you guys for your time. Appreciate it.
And you could send it over there if anyone wants to grab one.
That's an extra copy of the sheriff's department budget if anybody would like to look through it.
You have any committee reports?
We're doing collective bargaining meeting this afternoon.
This afternoon.
And then there's a solid waste. Are all four of you going tonight to the solid waste? Okay, so I don't need to go.
No.
That's all I've got this.
For last Wednesday.
Anything new?
Nope, same. Then we got a new, new board member. Very responsive, so that looks good.
I attended the hospital, the hospital board meeting this last week. Uh, just trying to get a better feel for how our hospital was doing. It happened to be just perfect because there were a lot of year-end reports to be given. It was, we should all be quite encouraged. I think what they're doing is really, is really good.
I had a revolving loans fund meeting that went well. Um, conservation board. We're going to be completing budgets, what'll be coming up. I have a lot of house. And for the, uh, nesty property entrance was up. She was trying to find an extension for that. That's up in the area.
Speak louder. People can't hear you very well.
Uh. Nesty entrance grant. It was, uh, has expired and Bob applied for an extension. That is up in the air, whether that will be given or not from the state. See what that goes.
I also had nine-one-one and that was just budget. Pretty simple where. See what's going on. The. Kinks in the tower yet, working on that.
Nine-one-one board used to hire a separate consultant to work on the budget. Yeah, Sean has taken on that responsibility.
About five thousand dollars a year, I guess, and he's.
Yeah.
Saves the.
So I've been helping him quite a bit to get that. That's the first time to get it all straight, but yeah. Sure it'll kind of be pretty easy once he.
Yeah.
Once he gets it done the one time, it'll be easier to do in the future.
Community services building. Mark, you met with.
Yeah, we gotta, we're gonna make another meeting this week and go measure desks and there's, they, yeah, there's plenty of desks in the cube economy. Yeah, there's a pile of equipment.
At their DHS.
Yeah, so we just gotta, me and Dan are gonna meet one day this week and just measure desks and see what, go where and stuff. And they're, they're excited about getting moved, so. Keep pushing the wrong. Yeah. Get that done.
All right, consent agenda?
Got the minutes and the claims. Just handed out the claim sheets. You may want a little more time to review that.
Make this, to do that.
Yeah.
I do have a judicial district meeting on Thursday. More updates on. Rollback.
That were the last payments for the sustainance for project no.
I know that's their, that's, oh, it's their legal fee. For the project. And they also have a loan payment. I can't remember if that was my last claim or this was. loan payment. I can't remember if that was my last claim or this was. That was last.
What's the um county policy on like somebody's last day to do last day celebrations or ordering and food for someone's last day? Is that usually covered by uh the employees themselves or?
Do those departments, I mean. Policy per se.
There's no policy, okay.
I know like a lot of times when it's a supervisor that's preparing, the other remaining supervisors chipping the money to pay for it, but I know some departments buy food for every time they have a commit uh committee or meetings too, so I mean it varies.
Okay, there's no set.
Yeah.
Okay.
County builds uh cycling so many times a year for diesel and there's once a year.
Once a year. Yeah, they there's road department, you mean?
Yeah.
For their share of the diesel, yeah.
The um Iowa State Association of Counties conference registration is open right now. And tomorrow the hotel's open.
For the spring drive.
Yeah.
Not the one that's.
Not the one-day meeting, but.
There's also supervisors maybe this month.
Yeah.
It's just a wide. Covering legislative, which a lot of us got already.
There's some nice uh synopsis legislative priorities in here from the Iowa State Association of Counties. If any of you would like to borrow this and read through it, here are all the legislative objectives for the Iowa State Association of Counties. And this is also online. But you're welcome to borrow my copy.
Anyone like to take action on the consent agenda?
Who to approve his consent agenda?
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same as I.
We have a, do we have a we established a city for reimbursement of cell phone use. I see some twenty-five dollars, some thirty-five dollars, some forty-dollar reimburse.
No county-wide policy. Uh it's up to, again, up to the department heads what they think is a fair reimbursement. In general, reimbursements are cheaper than
Buying a cell.
Buying a phone and paying for their whole plan. I'm opinion that's more appropriate anyway, cause if some person is using this uh the county cellphone for personal use, it would seem like they should be paying a portion of it. They shouldn't. But um IRS guidelines have changed on cellphones and they consider it a de-minimus infringement, so it doesn't count against employees as as cash compensation because it's not enough to make a difference, but.
All right, next item on the agenda, West County Library Innovation Funding Request. Morning, ladies.
Morning.
Sorry, I did send this out digitally, but.
I prepared this one that has the bigger.
So let's just start out. Wanted to say thanks for your support over the past year. Um libraries have had some challenges in terms of state property residential rollbacks at obviously city and county level. Our state of Iowa reimbursement reimbursement for uh some of the services we provide has also decreased significantly in the last couple of years. Uh those are based on a variety of metrics, but for us, we used to get about seventy-five hundred dollars a year, which was pretty minimal to start with, and now we're down to about five-five. So not a lot of funding coming in from the state. Um, that being said, we have a lot of positives uh that have been going on over the last year. I'll keep it brief since obviously I have a lot of data in front of you. This annual report really reflects the various uh subheadings and components of our strategic plan. Um, the report here in front of you reflects year two of our strategic plan. We're now in year three. Um, so a couple of the areas that we've really been focusing on in order to provide exceptional service to the community um is to first expand our reach, like where are the demographics that we're not reaching? Where are the user groups that it might be most helpful for us to reach them where they are, rather than expecting them to be able to come into the library itself? Um, we work to really optimize partnerships with local organizations and businesses um because that's mutually beneficial, right? Like the advertising between two different groups really helps see out new people involved. Um, so we have had um some new internship partnerships with Luther. We expanded our outreach with local schools. Um, we started partnering with Sunflower now that they have their fantastic new facility. We've been able to do some open gyms there, which has been really great because that's a real perfect opportunity to have a gym set up and equipment that's geared for small children, which is exactly what we've been doing. We've worked with Luther on doing that type of thing in the past, and that was great. Uh, but this is even better, and I know Sunflower's been really excited to have additional people come and check out their great new facility. Also, this year, I'm starting working with Earl to help provide some transportation for some library events, especially for kiddos that maybe don't have a way to get to the library, especially on no school days or early out days. Um, and that's been really affordable and helpful. Um, we've also been working on making both our building and our digital spaces more accessible. Um, so we successfully received a ten thousand dollar grant, a national grant this year to update our automatic door openers and add some new ones. Uh, we also received a depot outlet grant to help expand the Spanish language materials section in our library. And I've been working on things like creating bilingual forms for library card signups and other things for our Spanish-speaking residents. Uh, we also did a uh sort of upgrade to a new website that has both a much more streamlined user interface for everybody, but also includes enhanced accessibility tools. Um, so individuals can make all manner of changes within the accessibility suite that can change contrast for people who have visual impairments. They can do all manner of things with translation, text size, um sort of text to read all those things, so that's been great. Um, we also have purchased a new sound equipment that we're using for off-site programs so that people with hearing impairments are able to fully enjoy whatever we're presenting off-site, and we do do significant programming off-site. Lots of exciting stuff happening in programming this year. Um, this year we have over four hundred programs for all ages and specifically on the adult side of things where we've been placing a little bit more emphasis than last year. We have a thirty-five percent increase in attendance. Um, we're also working on overhauling some of our spaces and collections within the library building to make them more browsable, easy to use for library users of all ages, so that's been really fun. Um, if you get nerdy about statistics, like I do, we have a lot of great statistics about what the results of some of these changes have been. For example, uh simply moving our young adult collection into the adult side of the library has resulted in more than a hundred and fifty percent increase in checkouts um and just the short time since we've done that. So we've been keeping an eye on sort of what the impacts of our changes have been. Um, we've also been fortunate this year to have some of our staff featured in a variety of workshops, conferences, and other continuing up education opportunities that we've been invited to participate in both across the state and nationally. Um, at this point, we're getting more invites for that type of thing than we can actually accommodate with our time and budget, and that's a really great place to be. That tells us that our library peers are impressed with what we're able to do with the resources that we have. Um, lots of great updates from our Children's and Young Adult Department. Um, Sophie, our Children's and Young Adult Librarian, has really been expanding local uh collaborations with a whole variety of organizations, businesses. We're working continually to expand our outreach to schools, um looking at the possibility of doing some of that for in-home daycare providers. Um, and considering, you know, what it looks like to expand that even further. Overall, uh statistically, library users are up. Um, technology use is up, whether that's use of our our computers or devices that people bring in themselves. Um, our digital audiobooks and ebooks uh continue to increase. Added a couple mobile hotspots this year that we were able to get at a good price for rural users who don't live in an area with very good internet access. Those have been hugely popular, so we're looking to expand that. Um, and of course, you'll be hearing from RSVP later this morning, but they've also had a hugely successful year with over forty thousand uh hours in service across the tri-county area. Of course, the majority of that is in Marin County. Um, so lots of great things happening. Um, some more uh good changes on the uh horizon for the coming year. We've got some infrastructure that's failing because our renovation and a lot of our HVAC improvements were done in ninety-six, ninety-seven. So those units are now doing that really fun thing that they do when everything starts to fall apart at once. Um, so we're picking those off as we can. I think the city is gonna do a bond uh referendum in the fall to help deal with some of those larger expense items. Um, but we have a lot of great plans in the future for rearranging some of our spaces, continuing to do what we can to make services and collections most accessible possible, and to continue to expand our programming for all ages. Um, our request this year for the additional three thousand dollars will go towards our digital materials purchases, which we know from statistics, um serve library users from all over the county, but particularly from the rural areas. Um, we have a lot of really expansive digital users um for all manner of reasons. But what we're finding especially is that uh having access to digital materials is really, really important for people with visual and hearing impairment, and so it really a major accessibility boon if we can expand that. Question?
Have the two mobile hotspots worked?
Um, basically, it's a little mini internet device that you can take wherever in the county and will be able to connect to your phone, laptop, whatever, allow you to access it.
Chat that out?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, yep, check it out, take it home. You can take it on vacation. If you're traveling and you want kids to be able to watch movies, stream movies while you're traveling, um you can use it from home. There are some areas that are sort of topographically challenging enough that even a hotspot isn't gonna quite do it, but there are a lot of folks that don't have traditional email access currently in the rural areas that that does work for. Um, we've had them now for several months and they are almost always checked out with a reserve list, and we we just got the two because we got a great price on them and we wanted to just see is this what library users want? Uh, is this gonna be workable in our area? And it seems the answer to that is clearly yes, so we'll be looking to expand that this year and hopefully get eight or ten of them. Um, and at that point, for us, it's just a monthly service fee. Pretty straightforward. Right now, it costs us about fifty-five dollars a month to provide the service through US Cellular for the two.
For the two.
Yeah, so it's not inexpensive, um but it does provide a real lifeline to people in rural areas who need internet for work, play, school. Um, and and there are some some grant programs and other things out there that can help to bring the cost of offering that in the future.
How long timeframe are they? Looking out for.
Um, currently, they have the same checkout schedule as other items, so it's three weeks. And they pretty generally have people waiting for them as soon as they come back in, so they just continually cycle in and out. So I welcome, anybody wanna come do a program, you wanna come chat, walk through the library, see some of the changes we've made, talk about some upcoming changes? Anytime.
What what percentage of your patrons are actual decor residences compared to the greater county?
I do not have that in my head just at the moment, but I'd be happy to look that up and send it out to you. Yeah, I can say definitively that we have lots of rural users and especially in the northern part of the county, since my compatriots' public libraries are all located in the southern southern portion of the county. So lots of farm families and kids especially that come and check out materials from the northern part. Thank you very much.
Come on up.
Steve, two, yep, and you guys should have gotten that. And actually, you should have got the new one. That actually is.
I may not have got the new one.
Yeah.
I need the other one.
The ones, you can compare last year to things, so I apologize for that. So now you got two to compare. You got the other one. Okay, I'm Ruth Coon from the Spilbo Library. Um, we are still going strong. We still have quite a few people coming in and using the library. It's uh the the um youth has gone down a little bit. Um, school-age kids, I don't know, it seems like when they get a certain age where the libraries are taboo and won't go in and they come in anymore. But um younger kids are coming in, we're doing strong on that. I've seen a big increase in adults coming in and using the computers and doing things. We have a big increase in our um online books and things like that. Um that's going good for us. We've got quite a few events at the library, and those are still going strong and trying to get people in for those events and things like that. I'd like to thank you very much for your past support. Um, I'd also like to thank, um, we got support also from the Ridgeway City Council and from the Proton City Council. We get support from both of those cities coming into our library, so that's very much thankful for those um areas coming in too. Um, with our money last year, we did our landscaping out front that looks very good. We'll still add more things to that, but it looks very nice. We're living in our old crappy bushes that we have there. We have some beautiful flowers out there now and things like that. Um, with the additional money, um, we're also gonna work on possibly getting some hotspots in for for people out in the country and things like that, and doing more programming in our library to get people in and and keep it going. So, yeah, so you can compare the two between last year and this year. You can kind of see where we're going on that, so that's on the on my report that I gave you, so. Any questions for me? Thank you very much for your support.
Thank you.
Well, we're from the Keller Library, and we're looking forward to the quilters coming in this month. And they make a, they uh stitch a top of a quilt. Our uh summer library program was a big hit to all our children. Uh, we had Dr. Michael Bechtel from uh Workler College come in and present to the children with our kids' farm collection, insects, reptiles, snakes, and small animals, and they really had enjoyed that. He got to go around and look at them all, and he had the whole table just full. And we had also had the Blaine Park Zoo that same week. And uh we had a good crowd for that. We usually get between forty, sixty, seventy uh children and parents attending. We did touch a truck that week with the ambulance and the EMT talked to the kids about emergencies. And they climbed up into the ambulance and got a firsthand look at everything in the truck. So we also brought in the canine for the children to see how the police work with the dog. And he demonstrated just how he does it. And, uh, that was interesting to the kids. They're very attentive to all those things. And like Dr. Bechtel, he was really involved with the kids while he was doing his demonstration. And in October, we worked with Winship County Conservation and took part in Lake Myers Trunk and Treat. The Saturday, we gave deleted children's books to all the kids that would like one. And this gets the books into many hands. And for Christmas in Kellmer, on the first Thursday of December, we had the children decorate cookies at the senior center and on the square in Kellmer, and they can eat them or take them home. And deleted children's books were also available to them. And our requirements keep rising and the city budgets less money each year for the library. So we are asking for three thousand extra for our libraries. And we really appreciate your support to all our libraries in Winship County.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please say your name again.
Bernie O'Holt House. And I'm from the Kellmer Public Library.
Kellmer, thank you.
Yeah.
If anyone's having a hard time listening, they are listening. Devices over there for use. Appreciate you use them.
Hey, Ellen Spurn, I'm from the Ashen Public Library.
We've been having, uh, a really good year. Uh, our, uh, physical circulation, uh, continues to, uh, increase. Um, our digital circulation is still going through the roof. Um, that, uh, part of it, it, it's a combination of more people being comfortable with the technology. And also we've been doing, uh, a push to make sure that, um, as many of our patrons are aware of that service. And so we're doing a lot more outreach in educating and helping people get connected to that and be able to access that. Um, we also participate, the other libraries, uh, in the interlibrary loan. Um, any patron in any library is able to, uh, borrow any book from any library in the state. Our participation in that program is reimbursed from the state. Um, and while it doesn't sound like a lot, uh, we loaned out two hundred and thirty-eight books to other libraries through interlibrary loan for that. And our reimbursement for that, um, equals almost three weeks of my assistant's wages for that. So in terms of participating in that program and, and kind of that, so those are, are things that we look at and offset too. Um, we've been working on doing a lot of programming. We've had, uh, local and international authors. Um, yeah, we brought, uh, the River Museum from Uke, uh, to town. And we had ninety-nine people participate in that, which was a wonderful, uh, day for, for that program. Um, was really well received and, um, that's, uh, the cap for that one, for that program before we would have to, like, double it and do that. Um, so that was great. Um, we continue to be a resource in Ashen for people who, uh, are struggling. Um, I get lots of reference requests for information, for services around the county, um, for help to access those services. Maybe they don't know who to contact, who they need to see when they're, when they're, uh, need food assistance or, or other things. Um, that, that continues to be, um, something that we work at. Um, we have, uh, just in our community and, and being there with our services, we also help, um, we've, uh, done programs with like Grand Pad and accessing so that seniors can do that and also with, along with Grand Pad, um, recognizing scams and how to, and, and some of that cyber and that digital, doing that. Because a lot of, of especially our seniors aren't necessarily checking for what they should be checking for or, or looking at it and, and helping them out in that way. And, and letting them know, hmm, you know, this is, this is something that, you know, you need to look at or, you know, you need to watch this. And so the library helps provide that access too. And it helps in the library because, uh, the way that we have our, our digital setup, there's, there are some more protections that they might not have at home because we have it to protect the computers from accidental infection and things just in the library. That also helps because it helps protect their things too, when they're accessing it through the library in there. And yeah, and providing services because there are a lot of people who are not able to afford individual services. Especially like in our printing and copying, we're seeing a big, we're, we're seeing a big increase in that as well because people are not maintaining their own personal printers anymore. So anytime they need to print something hard copy, that comes for the library.
Do you charge the service a fee for that?
The, the, the printing is, yeah, like per page in there, so depending which printer they're using, whether it's a black and white. Um, there's ten cents a page and, and, uh, the color is quartered. And it, it depends on.
You talked about Grand Pad. Do you actually subscribe to Grand Pad for music?
We don't. We have had Grand Pad in to do programs to work with people and help what we do, um, in terms of like our digital things. Um, so anybody brings in their device and wants to, um, say, access our, our Libby. We completely help them if they request that for, you know, helping them load the app onto their device and getting them all set up and ready to go. And then we, and, and we access that, you know, both in the library, but if they also, we troubleshoot like over the phone. I've had, I've had families call and we're trying to set, you know, we're trying to set Aunt So-and-so up. You know, we're all here. I'm like, all right, tell me what, tell me what it looks like. So, you know, do this and we'll do it over the phone and troubleshoot for whatever to do. Um, and we get a lot of, uh, access, um, that they're coming, uh, business people and stuff because with our wifi and as we boosted it, um, we know we have a lot of people who are accessing it who are not necessarily coming in, but they're accessing it from the street because of where we have and, and through our windows, which is, it's there, that's what it's for. But we know we have a lot of, a lot of delivery people and a lot of, a lot of trucks that pull in around like a break time or a lunchtime when they're driving through and they're pulling in. So we know because they'll stop and you can see them on their devices that they're accessing.
Is there, this is a question for any of you at the libraries. Is there a, like a clearinghouse or a resource one-page place on the internet where you can find local resources for community needs, all the nonprofits and what they do in one place?
Historically, we have kept up a resource guide that I think is still available, uh, digitally that has a listing of significant community resources.
There's so many out there.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I think that's the last organization that.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's, sometimes it's current, sometimes it's not.
Right.
We just, yeah. And sometimes we go, like, we, we think this is a resource and we'll help them out with, okay, so that's not it. And then sometimes, you know, then we have to do the investigating to call and go. All right, so that's not where you call anymore, but you need to call this person.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Last but not least.
Um, my name is Laura, I'm just director for Fort Atkinson Public Library. And, um, I'm sorry to not mean to lose to you, but you get the paper copy today.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome.
So we've had a, um, a huge turn up for the, um, digital materials. Um, we have a program called Kupla, which is audiobooks, ebooks, and videos. And that has gone gangbusters, um, to the point we've had to put a cap on it unfortunately because we can't afford to give everybody what they want all the time. So, um, in that aspect, thank you very much for your programming or for your, your past funding. We appreciated that very much. That's gone towards programming and new books. And then we've also, um, we're asking for three thousand extra dollars this year for more programming and for digital, um, resources because it has become such a huge, um, resource for people, especially people out in the country. That way they don't have to come in and get stuff, especially like when the weather is bad and whatever, they don't have to worry about it. It's just a lot simpler. And we have a lot of older people who are now getting into digital, um, resources because it's simpler for them. And you can change the font, you can change the size. So it's a lot simpler for them to read it or listen to it if you can't read it anymore. Um, our circulation has gone up. We've got, we circulated two thousand six hundred and eleven items, most of which were children's fiction, but close behind it was the adult fiction. Um, we've got, uh, let's see, yeah, a hundred, or I'm sorry, a thousand thirty-one items were circulated to our rural population, which means our rural population has far outstripped our town population, which isn't hard, it's Fort Atkinson. Um, but it's, um, yeah, our rural population uses the library a lot. Um, and we want to give them as much as we possibly can. So we're going to do, we're hoping to do more programming for adults. We've got our summer library program that we're going to be organizing very shortly. Um, last year we did Dr. Bechtel, who was amazing. Um, we did the, uh, Blaine Park Zoo, which brought in like eighty kids and I normally have eleven. So that was unbelievable. Um, and then we had this community, uh, County Conservation come and do some stuff too for us. And that went over very well. Um, and we've done things like trunk or treat. We brought in, um, an international author. We had, um, our Summer with Santa, which is our, our fundraiser for the year. Um, and we've been doing hopefully more programming this year than we have in the past. So, um, we also do interlibrary loan. We had six hundred and sixty-seven interlibrary loans that we sent out, which is pretty good considering we're such a small library. So, um, yeah, we've got two hundred and eighty-four patrons, which is more than we've had in past years. So, we're trying our best to.
What are your hours?
We usually are open one till five every day, except Monday when we're open one till six.
Do you find a lot of after-school children?
We don't. I don't have lots of kids come in at all, unfortunately. Not sure why exactly, but yes. I'm trying to get them more in, I'm trying to get them in in the summer and, you know, bring them in. But, uh, we've been, uh, getting toys for the smaller kids so they can come in and play. Uh, and then we've got board games and stuff for the older kids and the computers as well. But we need to kind of figure out what else the kids are going to use.
I'm so thankful for all the small libraries in our county. It helps communities be healthy and educated by the communities.
Have you worked with Toys R' Us at all?
No, we haven't. That's, um, something that I would love to do.
They've got quite a program here in town.
Yes. I know there are lots of people who do use them, so, but that would be a good idea. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you all for coming.
Yeah, likewise. Next on the agenda, Andy Vandermott, our county attorney.
Good morning.
Good morning, Andy.
The only thing I have for you is a Dierdland Eastman. I finally got the update on Friday, so if you want to put that on the agenda next Monday, bound up. In a hearing, so at least.
They got the process for the building sale.
Of course, you let so.
appraisal and building sale of the D O T.
DHS building. Um, maybe you weren't informed about it.
You weren't, no.
I, I know it's, I know you talked about, you know, forward with that, but I wasn't in the mood on what's process.
I asked Jim all over, uh, for what, what his recommendations were on some appraisers, give a tweet and and what he has, what he has praised for, uh, is different perhaps than what real value is because he has, he has, uh, assessed it only as the first floor being offices and the bottom floor being basement. So I don't think that ref, is a good reflection of.
And I think typically assessed value and fair market value don't always meet.
No, they don't coincide usually. But we've got a couple of appraisers we could, should we send out a RFP type sitting on you or how would you do it?
Yeah, I, I would just, I, I would get a proposal from them. I mean, that way you're not, you're not making the choice. It's, uh, you're given the opportunity to decide between two qualified entities. So if you want to give me the names, I'll put together the RFP for you if you want.
Yeah, we've only, uh, Jim's recommendation was, there was possible of two local, but we don't have a lot of realistic comps, you know, for, for commercial sales. But he did recommend one, uh, commercial appraiser may, may perhaps be her, a good choice. I'll, I'll send you that when I work over.
So what?
This that next week also maybe, um, RFP.
So is this the RFP for an appraiser or for a real estate agent?
Would be first, my suggestion would be we get an appraisal first so we have a better understanding of, of value in their eyes and then we could proceed with the next step.
So it'll be two different RFPs.
Yeah.
Yes. I, I agree with that.
What, anything else for me?
I have a question, but not until the recycling update. Maybe after we have that discussion, one of us will contact.
Yeah, would you be available, Mark and I, or Mark and I have a few moments with you at the end of the meeting today.
If you must stop down, I'll plan on that.
A couple of issues I think would, counsel would be wise.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, this is Wetzel, N B I A twenty twenty eight.
Northeast Iowa Agency on Aging.
Hello, can you hear me?
You're online, thank you.
Yes, thank you so much. I'm Lisa Wetzel with the Northeast Iowa Area Agency on Aging. It is a mouthful. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Great, all right.
If you could speak up just a little bit, that'd be great.
Sure. I appreciate you having the option for a call-in. It saves me a great deal of traveling. My position does cover all eighteen counties, and so it saves us a great deal of expense. Um, so before I get started on our request, I was listening in previously and wanted to let you know there are a couple of online sources that do, um, keep a database of all community services available. One of them is two-one-one through United Way. And that is updated through each local United Way chapter. So you guys do have a great United Way affiliate there. Each community service agency is responsible for updating their own information. But if you go to two-one-one dot org, that should have the most updated information that that community resource provides to it. So that's a great one that you can have to access. And then if you're looking for, um, aging-specific information, our website through the N E. And then if you're looking for um aging specific information, our website through the N E I three A dot org, you can access lifelong links. And that one will have specific information on aging services. But it's your, it's not going to be as comprehensive as two-one-one. That will run the gamut of everything you could be looking for. So just something to stick in your pocket there.
Thank you, that information.
You're welcome. It's a great resource. So again, I'm here with the Area Agency on Aging, um and I always like to just kind of fill people in on a little bit of what we do. We are one of six area agencies on aging in the state of Iowa and one of over six hundred and twenty-six across the United States. Area agencies on aging use federal, state and local funds designated under the Older Americans Act to supply um services to help aging individuals remain living independent in the communities of their choice. So we are considered a quasi-governmental agency. However, we um are largely responsible for ensuring um that we get enough funding to serve the communities that we are in. The portion that we get from that Older Americans Act is not nearly enough to serve the needs of the communities that we have. Um, there is a great rise in the aging population, as you may have heard. And unfortunately, we have seen level funding um for about the last three years, which is not matching the trends of of what's going on across the nation. Our mission is to um help older persons respond to their evolving needs and choices. A lot has changed in the last thirty years in aging. Um, it's not the same as it was back then where you kind of got to a point and then maybe wanted to go to a a nursing home. Folks more now are active until a later point. They want to remain independent. They usually want to remain living in their own homes, and we really strive to help folks do that in a dignified way. And we like to keep them informed of what those choices are and what's available in the community to help them do so. We're a little different than some of the agencies you may see on TV, because we're a nonprofit. So we are simply really there to get that information to people and educate them on those choices that are available. The funding that we have, um there is a small portion of that that can be used for those at greatest need to provide some services in the home. And we do that based on um really a, a level of need. But it's, it's not unfortunately, an amount of funding where we can help to really fund everyone and anyone that comes in with a need. So we do have a prioritization system where we look at several factors to make sure that that funding is going to those with greatest needs. We will always provide our information and referral services to anyone and help them take a look and see what are those community, other resources in the community out there? How can they find them? And what are some other ways that they can afford them? We have four primary ways that we do this, um through the services we offer. That's connecting individuals to services that help them remain independent, promoting active aging with our health-based programs. Those are going to be things like our um Tai Chi for arthritis, um matter minutes, walking with ease programs. Our next step is providing caregiver support by helping those individuals who are caring for aging family members and enhancing health through our nutrition services, which is our most widely known with our home-delivered meal programs. Some of the services, like I said, our most well-known is going to be those home-delivered meals, the we're the meals on wheels, folks. But we just like to take this time during times like these to just remind people of the other things that we do have that maybe aren't quite as available. That information and assistance is the biggest piece that people, I think, don't always recognize that we're there for, but it is one of our highest utilized resources, either by calling our toll-free number or a lot more. A lot more folks are going through our website and doing our online chat through the lifelong links. People can call and find information on services available for theirselves if they're aging, for loved ones, neighbors, maybe it's people that they're serving through their businesses. Um, and that is absolutely free of charge. They call in and and we've really had questions about anything you can imagine. And our trained staff are able to answer those. And then through their training, they can identify if there might be a, a little more need for some more in-depth help, at which case they can make a referral to one of our um social workers who will go in, offer an opportunity to come into that individual's home for options counseling, where we go in the home, do a more in-depth assessment and provide the individual with what options there are, just like it sounds, options counseling for um further things that may be helpful for them to remain independent. That could be things like personal cares, homemaking, emergency response systems, material aid, case management, transportation assistance, um and and many other things. So the reason I'm reaching out to you is, as I discussed with that Older Americans Act funding, one of the things being a recipient of that, we are charged with reaching out to all of the communities we serve, reaching out to um the state, reaching out to the counties, the cities, local community foundations and things to um seek further support through matching funds. And in doing so, we like to reach out to you and just kind of give you a picture of what we're doing in your community and ask for your support as well to help us help the aging residents of Winnebago County. So in the materials that I had sent over in fiscal year twenty-four, which would be July first of twenty-three through June thirtieth of twenty-four, we provided approximate in an approximate investment of about a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars of services to residents of Winnebago County. The meal program alone was about forty-one thousand dollars. Those services, um Sorry, I just lost my little spot here. I apologize. Those services primarily um were provided for things, lifelong links. We had over two hundred and six individuals called to ask for information. We had seventy-five individuals take part in our nutrition program. Sixty-eight individuals take part in our family caregiver program services. There are twenty-two individuals that receive those home and community-based services that I talked about. So those would be folks who we are funding services in the home to help them stay independently, maybe a bath aid or a homemaker service. And the, or the numbers of these requests for services just continue to rise. Winnebago County um has right on par with the rest of Iowa with an aging population. The population there increased from sixteen point nine percent of the population being over sixty-five in two thousand and ten to twenty-three point three percent of residents being over sixty-five in twenty-twenty-two. And the number of requests we get are growing right along that same track. So with lo- uh level funding from the Older Americans Act, unfortunately, we're just really needing to seek more support from folks on a county level and city levels to help us continue to meet those demands so that we can continue to help those most in need and keep on providing those services in the county to those in need.
Can you back up just a second? Sorry to interrupt you, but what, how many, what percent of Winnebago residents are using your services?
Um, I don't have the percentage of residents using our services. I think the number you heard me was talking about the percentage of population over sixty-five.
So twenty-three point three percent of the population over sixty-five in Winnebago County have used your services?
No, that is, that is, I'm sorry.
Twenty-five percent is how much of the population is over sixty-five.
Over sixty-five, yeah.
Thank you.
Um, I could probably do some quick, it wouldn't be quick math. I would have to get into my database and I could come up with a, the population of, or the number have used services here. It looks like, let me bring it up here.
You can email additional information to answer the questions to supervisors at C O dot Winnebago dot I dot U S, and they can have the information.
Yeah, it looks like um in the letter that I sent with the initial request, there were three hundred and twenty individuals that received services from us in Winnebago County. Now that number would not include individuals who we were unable to serve due to funding constraints.
So three hundred and twenty people in our county used your services last year?
Correct.
Thank you.
Like I said, yeah, that does.
It's three hundred and twenty people, it's great.
Yeah, we do not include in there again, the folks, we do, I said, again, we have a prioritization system just because we have such a high number. We do not include in that number folks who we are unable to serve, but we have begun tracking um the folks that we are unable to serve as unmet need. And so that's probably some additional data that we could get for you as well to see how many we are unable to fill the gap with.
Thank you.
And so our request, what we're doing with counties is we're doing a flat request of three percent of the investments that we are um putting into each county. So that puts approximately forty-seven hundred dollars of that um investment that we had in there for last fiscal year. So we are just respectfully requesting, if you would be willing to help us to continue to support the aging population of Winnebago County so that those folks can continue to live in the community with dignity and respect and stay in their homes and continue to support the county there for you guys as well.
Okay, you talked about uh the meals, uh forty-one thousand meals. Do you know how many, how many people that is?
Not forty-one thousand.
That was for your, how many dollars?
Forty dollars, how many meal, how many patrons that is?
Um, it looks like that was seventy-five individuals.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Lisa.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you for doing that work.
Next item on the agenda, Deanna Hageman, R S V P with some funding requests. Good morning.
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 I apologize, I didn't get this sent out ahead of time. Thank you. Hi, so I'm Dina, the director with R S V P, been there, coming up on eight years, I think. Time goes fast when you're having fun. Um, the information that I've given you is, the first one that's very colorful is just a lot of information about our, our entire program, all three counties. So um you may notice we have fewer volunteers than we had last year, and that's because our Penn Pal program has shifted away from volunteers having to be a part of R S V P. Uh, I have lead volunteers who now manage that program. And so we were able to close out about a hundred files. In June, we were at seven hundred volunteers. So we were able to close out about a hundred of those people who just wanted to do Penn Pal. So um the number is down, but still quite high. Um, so just quickly, we have eight, eighty-two partner organizations within the three counties. Um, at the food pantries, we had just under four thousand families that are individuals that we had served, family members. Uh, we do um backpack program, gives out, just in decorum, about a hundred um shelf bags that have food stable, shelf-stable food in it. Um, we.
Hundred per week or?
Uh, they do that every other week. Um, last year we did over six hundred tax returns. Uh, we'll probably do more than that this year, over a hundred and fifty meals. So in partnership with N E I three A, we do meal delivery. Um, and then we have other uh kinds of positions that don't really fall into one of our categories that we keep track of. So that's the three hundred and eighty-three. Uh, on the back, I know that return on investment is something that you guys look at, and so I thought I'd just um kind of spell that out a little bit. I did, uh, our fiscal year is actually April one till March thirty, so that's why you see two different numbers on the other sheet. But I did fiscal year, July one to June thirtieth, and we had over forty-two thousand hours this last year. Um, the independent sector, sector values of volunteer hour in Iowa at twenty-eight, eighty-eight. And so uh if you do the math, it's over one point two million dollars that our program has contributed back into our three-county area. So then if you take our budget to, to calculate the return on investment, you'll see there that uh your return on investment is about seven hundred and seventy-six percent. Um, so we are very, um, we run on a really tight budget and we do uh absolute most that we can with it. The other sheet is broken down a little bit more by counties. Um, so the, the counties are actually the number of volunteers, uh how many volunteer hours there were in El Maki, Howard, Winnebago. And then this other category, we have people who come from Wisconsin, who come from Minnesota, who come from Fayette County that serve with us. So those are the folks that are considered in the other categories. So much of that, many of those um hours and dollars really could fit into Winnebago, but I don't have a great way to, to include that. Um, so you'll see Winnebago County total during that July one to June thirtieth had over thirty-one thousand hours, which computes to over nine hundred thousand dollars of service to Winnebago County. Um, and then uh down on the, on the bottom, Winnebago. Um, first of all, last year we received ten thousand dollars. I appreciate that contribution. This year we are asking for an increase. Um, I was flying solo from May until December, November, mid-November, when we finally were able to hire a volunteer coordinator. Um, and so would like to be able to maintain that position. Um, but just the things listed, because you guys are somewhat familiar with R S V P, I only added new stuff that we're doing. Uh, our VIDA program will be increasing. Hopefully we can serve more people. I think we've added five more preparers and greeters this year, so that expands their scope of service. Um, the Beely Clacks were added. Uh, she talked a little bit about meal delivery. When I started eight years ago, I want to say that the Decorum area was delivering twenty-five to thirty meals a day. They had two routes. Um, there, I think we're now delivering five to seven meals a day. And so um I know though the need hasn't gone away, those people haven't gone away. It's um they're, as she mentioned, they're under a tight funding stream. So we're, we've partnered with the Decor Food Pantry at N E I three A, and we're, we have volunteers now delivering grocery boxes to people who are um food insecure and homebound. And so uh a lot of the meals that we get from Luther that are prepared go into those boxes so that uh kind of is a meal, so they don't have to um fix everything. But that's a new program that we started. Uh, Oneonta Valley Literary Foundation is new, Asha Senior Hospice. We've expanded Sunflower. When I went up there for a tour, uh she showed me, it was nice out then. She showed me their pickleball court in the back and I said, oh, I have volunteers who play pickleball. And so we're gonna have, they also have an indoor court. So we're gonna have volunteers up there playing pickleball with their kids. Um, great intergenerational stuff. We restarted Humane Society and St. Ben's has been added. So um we've added additional opportunities for our volunteers to make sure that there's just a lot of variety and a lot of um things that are of interest to them. So.
What is the VIDA program?
Stands for Volunteer Income Set, Income Tax Assistance. Um, prior to COVID, we were with A A R P, uh and then we were, we combined all the programs um because El Maki was VIDA. So now we're all VIDA. Um, I guess that's, I talk fast because I get excited about what I do. Any other questions that you have or anything you want to know?
Great. I can't imagine our area without R S V P. I can't imagine our area without RSVP.
So many important issues they, you know.
Well, and kind of like I said here, we really have three clients. Our stations who need volunteers are our client. Our volunteers who are looking for things to do are our client. And then the people that the stations serve, I can't even put a number on that, they're our client as well. So, the other thing I was gonna say is, I recently asked volunteers, what does volunteering mean to you? And so here's three Winneshake County, well, they're lengthy because they have a lot to say, but here's three Winneshake County comments. "I look forward to volunteering in the classroom every week, it makes my day. Volunteering gives me a purpose and I have met more people." One of the things that I forgot to add on here is we recently partnered with Decor Park and Rec. There's no children in here, right? We helped out with the Santa letters. So Santa letters are dropped off at Park and Rec and our volunteers were the ones that responded to them this year. I think they had thirty letters or so. And so this was from a person who received a letter. "These letters brighten my day and made my heart happy. The letters are also funny sometimes and we all need more humor." That person is also a pen pal. So we have pen pals in the Decorah and St. Benedict's, around a hundred and thirty, I think, third graders. And then the last one, volunteering has given me a feeling of positive self-worth. It has put a little bounce back in my step, so.
And you're always looking to normal.
Absolutely. Even though I've been encouraged to, I don't ever turn anybody away. Because, I mean, like I said, for a while it was just me and it was just busy. So being able to, you know, have the funding from you guys helps us maintain, like I said, that volunteer coordinator position. Being able to add that position, that she can focus on volunteers and I've been able to go back and focus on stations because I feel like, you know, for a long time I've just kept everything afloat and I haven't been able to do the extra. Now I'm able to do what I really want to do with stations and support them.
Who's the volunteer coordinator?
Michelle McLean-Cruzy. It's public, she came in, she's been waiting to be a volunteer, so she came in on her fifty fifth birthday to apply. She's like, "I'm finally fifty five, can I join?" So, very passionate about the program, we're lucky to have her. Anything I'm forgetting, Chris?
I think just one thing that's always worth noting is that when we compare our RSVP program to RSVP programs elsewhere in the state, especially in much bigger metro areas with much larger populations, we have in most cases more volunteers, certainly way more volunteers per capita and far fewer staffing. And when Dina said she was sort of busy when it was just her, that is a vast understatement. There are many, many programs, much smaller than us, in metro areas that have a director, three, four, five full-time other staff. We have a full-time director and a point four of help in the office. So, it really bears repeating what an impressive accomplishment it is to have over six hundred volunteers serving at more than eighty stations with just that level of staffing. And we're also funded at a much lower level than the vast majority of those other programs. Because funding has not yet, seems to be coming, been right-sized so that you get funding based on how many volunteers you're serving. So there have been a lot of challenges there, which Dina has navigated admirably, but it'll really be wonderful when the federal grant gets to a point of right sizing funding so that you're getting paid basically reimbursed for the size of your program.
Is there a real hope for that to be?
There's hope.
Enough.
We'll see, you know.
The question, can you tell me what your total budget is at the point you would request it on the conference?
Do you want dollars or total, because I have in-kind match. Do you want a total total or a total actual dollar?
So, both.
So our total dollars are about a hundred thousand and we have about forty thousand in-kind. So we are super fortunate to be at the library. Staff, space, everything I need to run an office is all in-kind. So our budget, our total total budget is a hundred and forty thousand. And like I said, we turned that into one point two plus million dollars. I'm asking for fifteen thousand.
And Dina, what was your most recent calculation of return on?
Seven hundred and seventy six percent.
Thank you.
Thanks for all you guys.
Next item on the agenda are VA Administrator, Winnebago Twenty Six, Pudgeon, morning babe.
Good morning.
This is another one I handed out last week. If you need a copy, I have a few extras here.
Because I knew you had a copy. Okay. So we are not requesting any changes or increases to the budget. But with our general service or county assistant line items, we ask that they remain the same and if not needed, that they'll roll back into the general fund. The next one I'll do is some of the budget notes, so that's some of the stuff that I just gave you. Also, and combined with our GDX report, which is the geographic distribution of VA expenditures. So, and then the GDX report is also enclosed further back in your packet. So the GDX report for fiscal year 2023, because there ways a year, almost not quite two years, but behind. So for fiscal year twenty four, hasn't been released yet. So this shows the dollar amounts of benefits coming into the community. These aren't a hundred percent accurate but are a good tool as they go by zip codes where the veteran resides. And they don't report veterans who go to other VA medical centers from another area. And it doesn't track veterans who are not using any VA services. It also doesn't include veterans and dependents we assist from other counties. So those figures don't reflect on our county section on the GDX report under Winneshake County. Winneshake County veteran population for 2023 was nine hundred and thirty-three. Winneshake County report of distribution of expenditures for 2023, compensation and pension was five million three hundred and sixty-one thousand. And compensation and pension are federal monies paid to veterans and their dependents within our county. Education and vocational is one hundred and forty-one thousand. Insurance was forty-seven thousand and medical care was four million nine hundred and eleven thousand. So that's just based off the GDX reports that we get from the VA. The bottom part is with the county veterans affair, so this will be for fiscal year 2024, so just off of last year. So this report of federal monies for veterans and dependents who have reported back to our office. So this amount is not all inclusive, as we can only track veterans and dependents who inform our office of their grant, of claims by the US Department of Veterans Administration. If a veteran doesn't inform our office, we have no way of tracking this. And these are for the current year for new claims and increases granted by the VA Veterans Administration. So for 2024, we had one million two hundred and thirteen thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars. I also want to note that these VA monies are paid to veterans and their dependents to be spent in the community or how they see fit. This saves the veteran and dependents money and can stimulate the community. And this also allows veterans to pay property taxes, purchase a home, buy a vehicle and much more. The other part is some office stat numbers. So these numbers do not reflect our deceased files. So for 2024 office files, we had nine hundred and forty-five active files and fifty-two pending files. On the next one, so these numbers are logged to the best of our abilities. So this is for 2024 office stats for phone calls. I will touch on this this summer when I was doing essentially both positions until we got a replacement after Mary retired. There's probably some I missed to log because there would be times where I'd have somebody in the office and several people out waiting in the waiting room. So you try to do your best to log it, but I'm sure there were some missed for phone calls or office stops. But for 2024 office stats for phone calls was three thousand one hundred and eighty-five. Office stops was one thousand six hundred and ninety-nine. And the veteran designation stops. So these will decrease as veterans get it added to their driver's license or their non-driver ID card over time. And so for 2024, we had fifty-seven. That's kind of a little. So we track when veterans come in to get the word veteran added to their driver's license and then they would go back up to the treasurer's office. And then once they get it added, it will stay on there. So if we get somebody that's never had it added, or say we get somebody that comes from another state and would now come to Iowa, they have to verify, per the Iowa code, we have to verify the eligibility to sign off on the DOT form to get that added. So, so for the last few years, it's been staying pretty good with higher numbers. I've expected that over time it would lower, which it will, but it's been staying up there with some pretty good numbers as of right now. So, anybody have any questions on any of that? Okay, and then the next one I wanted to go into is the response to your Board of Supervisor for Budget Review response. So our department has continued to provide various outreach throughout the year along with claim and benefit assistance to veterans and their dependents. This year, we are not requesting any changes within our budget. We have not increased our budget much in the last ten years and continue to maintain within our operating budget. Having two full-time staff allows for smooth running office and good customer service to our clients. Staff continues to receive CEUs, attend training to better assist, educate our clients and the public on VA changes. We'll continue to do our annual newspaper outreach insert as they reach every doorstep in the county, which results in one hundred percent coverage. We generally don't utilize much of the general service veterans funds and predict to return approximately fifty thousand to the general fund this fiscal year. However, if these services are needed for temporary emergency assistance, they remain available. But if we don't utilize them, they are returned back to the general fund. Outside resources are assessed first and then the emergency assistance program when needed. VA's last fiscal report, according to the GDX, which is the geographic distribution of VA expenditures, Winneshake County veterans and surviving spouses received five million three hundred and sixty-one thousand from compensation and pension benefits alone, from the work we do. With the PACT Act expansion being the largest in VA history, continuing our mission of assisting veterans and their families. That's all I had to report. So unless anybody has any questions for me, because I'm kind of fast too.
The veterans of Winneshake County, you're so fortunate to have your assistance in right here in the courthouse. I've heard from some of them who have been served by you guys, how much they appreciate it.
We appreciate that too. That's an honor to be able to assist them and help them with the benefits and navigate through the VA system because unfortunately that can be a very complex and not an easy process or system to navigate.
And office stops, does that count when someone walks in and scares the crap out of you?
No.
Okay.
No, that's just business related.
When do they anticipate that new clinic is gonna open for the bank?
So the last I had heard from the clinic manager they were looking at, February. And I just had to follow up with the social worker on some other business, so I asked if they were still on point for like the middle of February and she said they're looking now mid-April. So.
That was up to the tour of March, I don't know, it must have been.
Yep. Yep, Dana said it'd be mid-April. It didn't sound like it was due to the construction part being delayed. It sounds like with the equipment coming in and getting it installed into the facility is kind of where the holdup is, so.
Yeah, because they were talking March first, I think, when it was up to. That tour of everywhere, it's really, really a nice.
It'll be nice, like I said, it's. Which will be nice, because where they're at now, they don't have, they don't have any outside windows at all. So, and then just almost doubling in space will be really nice, so. And it sounds like when the Public Affairs Director was up from Iowa City here not too long ago, he had stopped by our office, so he'd asked for like all of the, like media contacts here locally because I suppose down in Iowa City, they're not familiar with up here. So Brittany put together and compiled a list for like the Decor newspaper, decornews.com, the radio stations, all of that stuff, Kelmer Courier. So when they are ready to do that stuff, he can send the public, like news release out to all of them so they can get it out to everybody in our area too, so they'll know, know. Because it sounds like they'll be doing like a ribbon cutting ceremony once they officially open. So, yeah, it's exciting, so we're just waiting. And it's very possible that stuff will go along and from mid-April, maybe hopefully back, you know, back up and be sooner. But that was the last update I got, was mid-April. All right, if nobody else has anything for me? All right, thanks guys, have a good day.
Thank you.
Yep.
Was Andy gonna go through his budget or?
Well, that'll be next week. Because of your two weeks ahead of time, you usually get them and then you get them passed out today for next week's meeting. So the ones that are being reviewed today, you got last week.
All right, so on the fifteenth, on the fifteen, next item on the agenda, Stephanie Prom, because Winneshake County is involved in prison. Along with Mark and Randy.
All right, guys.
I brought some, no, Andrew brought some.
You back this up to the audience.
Maybe you can see me on the smiling camera.
The letters on the front, but she already have so.
Well, thanks for having us. Steph and I were going back and forth last week when we were sharing chat. Decide how many years we've been in this, we've been together doing the same thing and we think it's 10 now, so. Of all the changes in times of the supervisors over our tenure of doing that, we now feel like does that make it a goal since we're still the ones that are here to watch these? But really, I say it in reflection of the longstanding partnership that we've had with Winnebago County and the ability that we feel strongly about to have continued to return on the investment of that the partnership makes into this organization in a number of ways. And realistically, it is a partnership that our organization cannot be without. The scale and scope of our budget and the way that we look to return to this county is commensurate to your involvement in our operation and your support in that way. So we want to thank you guys for the continued partnership of long-lasting. And it was well before the 10 years that we've been doing it. A milestone in thinking about the achievements that our team in this institution has had in their time of tenure. I asked Steph just to kind of give a little bit of a recap of 24 achievements and a slightly forward move of 25 as well, if she can do that for us.
Yeah, I don't know how much time we have. Is it five minutes?
Fifteen.
Fifteen, okay, all right.
Yeah, lots of time.
Okay, so, yeah. In your package, you'll see kind of just a rundown. This is what we typically hand out during our quarterly meetings is that first page. And it's just kind of a tally of the different grants and stuff we have been awarded for different projects around the county and then some of them that are pending. As you can see here in the last year, we've had just over $200,000 in awarded grants. That next page is kind of a interesting tool that, you know, a lot of different entities actually call upon or or use, take advantage of. It tracks Decor's hotel motel tax revenue. And then it goes into the taxable sales. So and in there it kind of explains what the the local option sales tax is, which all of you know, are privy to, but a lot of the places or a lot of the people that live in the county maybe don't understand local option sales tax as well. If you, if a good or service is sold and is taxed in Decorah or somewhere in the county, it actually gets spread out by population throughout the entire county. So someone in Castalia or Fort Atkins that actually benefits from a vehicle that's being sold in Decorah. So it's always kind of that rising tide. Yes, so. It's a good opportunity to kind of showcase how the county at large is benefiting from businesses. And then it also tracks unemployment too at the bottom of that page, what our current unemployment data says. The next, the next page here is your economic impact of tourism. So I think it was in the last year, Amy Ziegler had come and kind of given us a nice little presentation, a rundown. This economic impact report was just released in the last few months, I would say, this fall. And it just kind of goes down the line here and gives you some information in terms of tourism and how it relates to our county and how, again, when a visitor spends money here, it, again, positively impacts the county. And then that last page is something that we had handed out the last couple of years, but I like the layout of it and it's kind of flashy. So it just kind of tracks what our organization and the impact that we have on the county at large and then just in the last five years as well. Just the projects that we've been a part of or assisted with and then total jobs created in the last few years as well. And then it kind of calls out biking, trout fishing and the Trout Run Trail and the Prairie Farmer Trail. And we've talked about that data in the past as well, but it's always kind of a nice little tool to revisit.
I wish there was some way to highlight this in the minds of every resident of this county.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it lives online somewhere. If it doesn't, we can make sure it lives on our website and the county can certainly, we can sell, send the file to whomever and.
No, I know. There's just so many people that don't look online or don't look in the paper. They just don't. They don't see this. So a lot of assumptions are made, but this is so important.
Yeah, and I mean, I think it was when I first started, they told me I wouldn't actually understand economic development for three years. There's a three-year learning curve of all of the different ins and outs and how things work. So as you all imagine as well, sitting in a supervisor seat, it takes a little bit to understand how things operate and function. So. I will say in terms of just talking points, high level, the Sunflower Childcare and the Discovery Center facility are now open and operational. They've been open for just over two months and reported November, between November and December, in two months of being open full-time, the Discovery Center has brought in just about $30,000, so $15,000 in revenue a month through day passes and rentals. So it's been a very popular destination for families that both live here and visitors. So the functionality of the layout and operational is is working, which is exciting. You know, we'll see what that looks like a year, a year out and and their first year of operations, but they have expanded some of their operational hours to because of the demand from families. So. If you haven't been there, I'd be happy to host a tour, you know, for anyone that wants to go see it. Or if you want to put an organized tour together, I'd be happy to host you. Another, I mean, I just went through the packets. That was my second one. And then in terms of future priorities, we spent a lot of man-hours on childcare, as you can, you already know and about imagine. Now, not, not to say that childcare is going to go away completely. They are looking at, there's some different stakeholders that are looking at some wage enhancement programs that might help in-home providers or different center workers. But also housing will be one of our topics that kind of our priorities that kind of floats to the top. And just looking at different opportunities that we can assist that and exploring different types of housing. Steve and I have talked about sort of that mother-in-law accessory dwelling unit. That will be something that we kind of dive into a little more. And then just different housing development opportunities.
Have we attracted any new business coming into Winnebago County yet?
Yeah, so that's my, my last topic here too is, is we can't, we can't forget the retention and recruitment effort that that we in our office have. You know, I highlight some some of the project investments that have happened in the county over the last few years, but, you know, it's official as of Friday. We we, as in Winnebago County Development, have a contract agreement with Decorah Jobs, which is the the city of Decorah's economic development organization. I believe the city of Kelmer has their own economic developer there. So instead of hiring someone, they just actually contract us to to provide them some administrative support in their business park. We just closed on about an 11 and a half acre development that will happen up, up in there, starting this spring.
That's.
In the Decorah Business Park, yeah. So I, I provide all the administrative and management support for that organization with time. But that has been at least a five-year project. You know, that, that started before COVID. And we looked at sites all around Winnebago County and ended up finally landing back to where we started. So.
So 11 and a half acres of the current.
Yeah, so Decorah Jobs owns just under 90 acres, I think, 80, 80 or 90 acres up there still that remain in that park. There's city water and sewer up there. What they ended up purchasing as of Friday was about 11 and a half acre site along the highway. So it's some of their last highway visible lots. We own, I think, just about 30 acres along the highway up there and they bought 11 and a half of it.
That's on the west side of the.
Yes, yep. Yep, left side, yep. It'll be exciting developments, a pretty sizable project. And it's their needs to share who it is. So I'm not going to say.
Still someone else looking at property up there too?
Yeah, we have a few other businesses that have explored sites. I know one of them just bought a building in town. But yeah, there's, we have all of the sites listed on Winnebago County Development's web, website. We have a access tool portal. It's called Loess. It's like Vocation One Information Services site. Maddie actually took the drone up and took pictures of all of the different lots that we have for sale. So that makes it accessible online. If someone's looking from elsewhere, we've had anything from pharmaceutical plants to you know, concrete businesses, I guess, electricians, anyone that's from outside looking in are able to see all that data. Price points and stuff online.
I don't know if you can share the new design on Friday. How many jobs might that create or is it existing?
It's an existing, it's an existing business that's actually expanding sizably. They will be adding potentially three to five jobs in the next three years, but, so it's not, you know, a lot, but it's definitely some. The tax impact will be great. Yeah.
And then the redeployment of their existing facility will allow for opportunity for expansion for additional business.
Yep.
So it will drive our growth rate up again over 3%.
You know, to piggyback on that too, as we wind down, in this type of business, you always have these waves of projects where you see real spikes of a huge project like a sunflower or whatever. But we do have one consistent level of measurement that allows us to see that growth is growing upon its past. And realistically, when I look at Jeff D, that's great, but I love to see the trend line of the things like Hotel, Hotel, yeah, we had our COVID spike, but you can see we're back into a positive trend line. If you look at the three consecutive, the trailing quarters of all the taxable sales, each year's quarter is growing over the previous year's quarter in that. And realistically, when we try to measure the success and the compounding nature, if we only use grant income or dollars levered from one year to the next, we can have, well, even though we're doubling the money in this one year, you have these big spikes that in the measurement of a project. So many of these efforts take months, years, decades for that matter, to land some of this large growth. And so it's really nice to see the stability in those trend line numbers of that kind of growth that reinforces that that averaging out of all the projects and the work that's happening over a 10-year period or 20 or 30 or 40 years for that matter. To kind of have that consistency in a benchmark of data on how that goes so that it's that, that other achievements outlined in within that too obviously are spectacular and are proof that this stuff is happening that allows for that kind of trend to happen within the actual taxable income. And really, the only way we can generate value for, for the county, the primary ways is increasing taxable revenue, increasing sales tax revenue, creating jobs and then create money flow through the community. So not all numbers hit a measurable aspect of performance, but they can surmise themselves to stand like this that really shows that the work is being achieved at a high level.
And as we deal with that House File 718 and our limits on taxation, the importance of these tourism dollars and sales tax dollars are so great. And if we can continue to increase those, it increases the health of our county, the countywide. It's not just Decorah, as you pointed out, it's the whole county. So this is so important and I, I hope that we can see this grow and I hope that the whole county can get on board. Let these citizens realizes we all do better when we all do better.
With that said, our ask is on the letter, we left our ask at the same funding levels of the 2024 funding commitment that the county supervisor had made to the organization. So that would stay the same at the $95,000 will be the request for Winnebago County Development Tourism.
Obviously, the the bills is great, but the housing issue is probably the one that most people keep talking about nowadays, not just here, but everywhere, especially affordable housing. I think it's always the definition of affordable. And it's not, I mean, the average, what, home now is probably over $500,000 as well over. That's not affordable for people working.
Yep.
It's different types of housing, you know, like the accessory dwelling unit housing and what we're calling planned unit development, which is more of a dense style housing. I mean, there's different types of development that could be happening that maybe aren't right now. And it's our job to sort of kind of promote and expand that.
Winnebago County has a thing going on. Compared to public.
They do.
Multi-family, department style.
You go to Des Moines, I mean, it's all it is.
Multi-family, just.
A part of the end. And 20 flexes, 70 flexes, no matter what. Yeah, it's crazy.
I've met with a handful of developers that are very interested in Winnebago County. So just kind of cultivating that good rapport with them and get to know some of the sites that might be available.
And you know, we see the Wakan one and we talked about those and we did that. I mean, one of our largest successes was the multi-family dwelling built in the business park up top that we, we got that going, what was it, five years? I don't know, it was five years, three years ago.
18.
18, you know, so it's a multi-year process and it's a land that to ensure that, and realistically, it takes tax credits typically to engage that kind of a build, that multi-family. Not obviously from us, but on the federal side. So it's a big process and leap to get through that. But that is a nice part of, we can kind of allow that redistribution of bandwidth back into housing now from when a lot of it was leveraged to execute on the childcare side. That we can kind of redistribute our bandwidth within, at our organization's staff into that housing focus for 2025, hopefully.
If, if we don't put some focus into the other seven incorporated towns in Winnebago County, we at the county level especially will be facing some serious issues. We have zero, we have very negligible growths in almost all of those as far as tax base increase in revenues. And if we start seeing, which we're beginning to see in other places in the state, that unincorporation of small communities and that burden falling back on the county, we're going to be in real deep trouble. Where all of the services come to Decorah. All the, for the most part, most all of the housing, most all of the, the hotel opportunities are all here. There's no grocery stores with the exception of Hubers. Basically, in all of those seven, all of those seven incorporated or incorporated towns. So all of them are really, are really fighting a tough battle.
Yeah.
And I don't want to see it coming back here to, to our table. It's bad enough. It's two of us sit on city councils. Decides its table and it's a rough, it's a rough road.
For sure. And, and you know, it takes in exploration into what kind of public-private partnership, you know, we don't dictate the private side of where investment chooses to come. We have to support it when it is involved and an opportunity for us to seize. And most of the private interests where those dollars are looking to be leveraged unfortunately consolidate into the largest municipality that has the most, highest level of demand that's identifiable. When we look at housing as an option and trying to reappropriate more affordable positions out into greater communities. And then I used to live in Ridgeway, I live in Bluffton now, my mother was a Mary Cresco. I'm not ignorant to the fact that these small municipalities face challenges within the system. But to dictate private, as money deployment across the county really takes private money to chase it there and push it in that direction. So we are absolutely open to ways in which we can leverage any federal, the state and or local options to try to redirect those investments. But do note that some of it is just, that's where the money flows.
I'm very much aware of that. My suggestion is giving some focus to those communities. Because for the most part, they do not do any visioning, nor do they even consider that they need to be looking for some kind of even, even a partnership that's going to create some subdivisions, some housing.
Yeah.
Because housing is the only thing that will attract retail within those communities. Without it, they'll continue to die as they are. And without it, they're going to, they're in deep trouble. And, but they have no visioning. I can tell you, sitting on the city council in Spillville, there's no, there's no visioning for that type of, because they can't see it. And can tell you the same.
Yeah. We used to have the mayors who all had open positions on our board and there was a period in time in which they were attending in higher levels of frequency from the rural outline centers and that has tailed off. I mean, so in trying to engage that population, engage that level of behavior or foresight, it's not something that we aren't willing to do. We have to, you know, it's a two-way street of that.
They almost have to push them because they don't, they're, they're lulled asleep into, into the canyon that they're in and they're not seeing sunrise.
We had done, we had like procured and worked with Upper Spurland a few years ago, a handful of years ago for a housing study that I identified possible development sites in each of those communities and then actually went to those communities and presented. And some of the feedback was positive, but some of it was like, oh, we don't have the infrastructure that can even support additional housing to this size too. So as they're like looking at redoing some of their systems for infrastructure, if they haven't, they should really think about, you know, if we, if we, let's build it to, to withstand this many people. But then if, you know, so-and-so's, you know, parts with the 20 acres outside of town, I think.
We know his capacity, sewer capacity.
Yeah.
Uh, Ford has, Ford has, that's the best time it has capacity. Spillville has capacity, you put water and if they ever get the water project done.
This was before most of those, and those cities were all looking at just getting there when we had done that.
Now they had to do.
Right after you started, wasn't it?
Yeah, seventeen or eighteen.
Is that when we did the housing study?
Those were fun meetings to go to when they were.
Did surveys. All right.
Any other questions?
Thank you for your time today and support of our organization.
So.
There was a question online about the handouts. There is not a place where they're all located. If anyone wants them, they just need to email auditor at co dot winneshake dot IA dot US and we can scan in handouts. Make sure you let me know which ones you want.
That's all. All Merlin would be Iowa R C and B. Good morning.
And to uh start off by first of all, thanking you for your contribution to our C and B lab here. Uh, we feel like we put those dollars to excellent use. Every dollar we received from our county partners, we turned that into more than fourteen dollars directly that came through our office alone. We include projects that we worked on or that we implemented, but the money went through another entity that's not counting in that figure. If we, those figures were almost to a hundred dollars straight away, I think we received from our county's investors that ran back through our region. So we, we take a lot of pride in that. Uh, we've got, uh, as a reminder, nine full-time employees and one part-time employee. Seven of which live in, in Winnebago County. Most of those, almost the entirety of those uh salaries are paid off with contracts for service that we have, fee-for-service projects or grants that we're able to uh secure. And so your funds help pay for things that a lot of those things can't tackle. Property taxes, our directors and officers insurance audit alone cost almost twenty thousand dollars last year. Uh, things like that, utilities that are, that are difficult to, to pull off of uh other countries or certainly a substantial help from our partners with that. Last year, some of the, the exciting things that we helped work on, we touch a whole range. So that if uh, if we're not working on it, uh, it's just because we haven't been asked yet. Got a tremendous staff that's, that's very flexible. Uh, you know, Winnebago County Development was just again, we work very closely with them and, and all the other partners to make sure that we're not duplicating efforts, but that we're helping to enhance. So uh they identify some projects and then a lot of times we're the ones that actually implement uh those projects. For example, we just did the videography project with the uh highlighting the cities of Spillville, Kalmer and Oshin. Uh, but the project with them. We're working on a project at Sunflower through a farm to school grant where we're creating some interpretive materials for that discovery center as well as helping them develop curriculum to help the students there or the attendees there uh realize where their food comes from. And then also help them bring more local food into those, into the preparation there through those opportunities. Uh, our uh farmer's market promotion program's been a great success. Obviously, Decora has very strong vibrant farmer's market. We're working with farmer's markets throughout seven communities. Uh, Northeast Iowa to help make those more vibrant, more sustainable. Uh, along with a couple of other efforts, we have a, one of only two mobile cider presses in the nation. Last year, we pressed apples for eighteen different producers uh in Northeast Iowa and pressed for three different entities, Virgin Cider Works, Pivo, and then Paha Brewery, or Ciderie, which is in Waverly, actually. Um, but a lot of the growers in Fayette County um take their apples there and Beckett County. So uh we pressed, I think, twenty-four hundred bushels of apples, most of which would be waste product because they're not the pretty apples that those, those growers could sell. And so it's, it's certainly a value-added uh effort there. We've got huge demand from outside of our region to take that press too. And so we're, part of the project that we had originally was to identify how much we'd have to charge those folks to take that press outside of our area. Trying to make sure we make enough money in that entity that we can keep it free or very low cost for our region to use. Working on uh a number of projects with, uh, on the egg producer side. Uh, we wrote in the last, in the last quarter alone, thirty, but over the last year, seventy successful grants for either grain dryers or solar projects uh for egg producers or small businesses. Demand for that is, is improved to help increase their productivity. Uh, our multi-cropping project where we're working on relay cropping, we've got partnerships with both the American Flood uh Coalition as well as Iowa State to look at the, not only the soil health benefits from degenerative egg, but also how much water, how much more water that soil could hold, the infiltration capacity increase from a practice like that versus confectional egg. And we're showing some really promising uh results with that, working with the Iowa Flood Center on that project. Sort of tied into that, we recently secured a twenty-five million dollar grant from NRCS, which will, regional conservation partnership program grant, which will put almost fourteen million dollars into the Turkey River watershed for both voluntary easements on flood plain or wetland areas as well as other practices that'll help reduce the impacts of the flooding. So decent, almost half of Winnebago County is in the partnership. So a, a large portion of our, our producers will be eligible for uh that program once it's, uh, once it's finalized. Currently working on final negotiations on contract. It's one of the only contracts that grant programs out there that there's actually negotiations after you receive it. So uh, we're working on final negotiations to help them have that in place and, and help it going soon. And that'll be a, a five-year project. So.
It'll only be private, though?
Only private enters.
County Director, like we have with some of the.
Yeah.
Road.
Yeah. Road. No, no, unfortunately, NRCS only allows their funds to go to private landowners. So uh, so we can't tie any of those on-road structures like we had in the past. Though we are continuing to work with uh Homeland Security and FEMA on trying to access some of those funds for potential projects like that. They're starting to put a lot more of their money into pre-disaster mitigation as to just trying to, you know, afterwards. So hopefully we'll be able to crack that nut. They've just changed their, their program, their system requirements. And so hopefully we're able to make that cost benefit analysis a lot easier than we were in the past. In the past, they didn't give a lot of credit for um crop loss or like road destruction damage downstream. It had to be almost tied directly to buildings or homes that were, that were damaged. And so it's hard to make that tie. Uh, it's a lot easier to make the tie of the other impacts. And, and as you guys know, there's substantial cost and loss when you're regram roads bridges downstream or watch out because there's some road structures that we. Yeah, yeah, we've got to see opportunities identified too. And so it's just a matter of tying the funding source to, to those. Yeah.
On a similar topic outside your budget, but just so they know, the on-road structures that were, that are tied with the conservation board, that were tied to ARPA money, that we do have a contract in place at the end of calendar year so that we met our obligation under the funding requirement that those those uh merit and rescue plan dollars were obligated.
Right.
So they had to have the contract in place, which was a change from the initial guidance that we had pledged and action to pledge the money didn't count. It had to actually have a contract in place and they signed a contract on about the last day of December.
The definition of obligated changed uh at the last minute. And so uh, seven, seven counties were, were calling me uh, and it, and it, and it bit of a tizzy on how do we, how do we keep the new definitions of obligation. So.
So ours were all officially obligated. We are, we're down to just a few projects left that we're, that we're unfolding.
And that, that pro, those projects, we're gonna run all of the dollars through ours. We've secured some other funding in addition to that, uh, those funds. Those projects should be started as soon as early this spring. Some of the tree clearing has to be done by the end of April. Um, and I expect it, construction will be moving on. Skyline construction, I, I, maybe you guys, you guys, maybe you've heard that skyline construction was the little, the little bit on that, on those projects.
I think they had a hopefully.
They'll.
Okay. But Barb is meeting with us next week so they're getting more.
Yeah. Yeah, so w- we are, we are working on the tourism end, we're, we're, we don't do a lot into housing, but we just worked with the city of Claremont on a downtown housing grant where they redeveloped five apartments in upstairs of a business in the, the back of a business. Uh, grant was a nightmare. Uh, most communities that got it turned the money back because they changed the rules partway through and, and made it a nightmare. But uh, trying to work on, working through that process.
Was that the one through economic?
It was, it was, it was rescue plan money that the state was trying to get out there. And so they said, here it is, come get it. And we got it. And people started to work. And then all of a sudden, they realized that they might not have followed all of the federal proclamation rules in terms of procurement and other things. And so then they said, oh, hold on, here's all these rules. And then people were like, we didn't do that. And so now trying to figure out how to go back and, and meet the regulations and the requirements after the fact is a challenge. Um, so, yeah. That's what it is. Yeah, it is what it is. But I, it, it, those are the type of projects that we sort of pride ourselves in being able to work through, uh, help communities manage that. Uh, obviously, a lot of the communities in our area don't have significant capacity to work on major projects outside of what they do on a day-to-day basis. So we try to step back and hope that happens. Worked on a project in Ridgeway right now with the Turkey River Cultural Center. I spent money with that, with the uh Slim, Slim's uh wood. It's essentially the largest collection of wood crafted materials in the nation. Um, and he moved it from Harmony down to Ridgeway to the old school building. And so we're working with him on, um, and submitted a grant and, and hopefully we'll be able to get that grant. It'll help catalog and also promote and preserve a lot of those displays and exhibits as well as help, do a little bit more, a little bit better uh interpretive design work so that people can see the importance of what they're, what they're looking at.
What's that called?
It's the Turkey River Cultural Center. Yeah.
And Hobo Kale.
Yes, there's, it, he does, he does a number of different things, but the woodworking collection is actually quite, quite impressive.
Been looking for a site to put that for.
Area, area. Yeah, yeah. And so the, the Ridgeway School, which obviously was, needed quite a bit of work actually after the previous business had gone in. Such a spray funk, the entire thing.
Shut.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, so needed a little bit of work and so we do a lot of work with Small Business Development Council and that's been one of the clients. I, I could go on and on, but I realize we're, we're past time. I'd be happy to answer questions. Uh, request is the same as it's been, I think, the last seven or eight years.
It's good business.
Yeah, I'd like to think so. So.
It's that past one road structure is phenomenal.
Yeah, we continue to work at opportunities to, to put in more of those. Okay, thank you, thank you. Thank you.
Next up on the agenda, Don Mookie, IT and GIS Director with his twenty-sixth budget.
Right. I passed those. I'm gonna try to read through that, but if I don't get everything we talked about, we'll still kind of move it. So. Um, I'm gonna be talking to you about our IT department, which includes GIS, geographic inclusion system. So first of all, I'd like to take the time to just thank the board for the continued support from the T department. Uh, basically, this is allowing us to actively maintain a standard in the team. Um, which basically also allows us to uh provide the necessary resources to effectively handle whatever the county's technology needs. Good example of this is uh basically ICBMT came to us or helped us with a technology assessment. We were able to expand the department by adding the systems admin person position. Basically, by adding the additional experience and knowledge and talent, our team was able to concentrate on failure support duties and address the recurring issues that were basically system-wide. Realistic and costly in nature. So once we identified uh these issues, we're going to deal with them on a more proactive approach. Basically, instead of just putting out fires, we're actually able to look and see why, why we had the issue the issues that were caused by that. And so we were able to fix things. And so then those issues aren't a problem going forward. So fortunately, we were able to add to our team and that person is Sherman, uh, who's working over in the old jail most of the time. Uh, he was added back in May and uh picked it up running. Basically was able to focus on some pretty high-level uh projects that we had going. So he was able to finish our data center upgrade. Of that was basically verifying, enhancing and documenting the network. And he made sure that we had kind of the redundancy pieces that we needed. So um, a couple of minor little networking issues that were basically caused us, caused us a problem that we needed to, you know, split the data center. So yeah, he's been primarily working on uh three new server hosts that were purchased back in June. And then part of that also involves the VMware environment. That's the virtual software that allows us to run all the servers on one piece of hardware. And then the other part of the upgrade was adding the, the immutability piece. So immutability means that there's no way we can basically tamper with the backup. So once the backup's in place, it's actually like tamper-proof for up to sixty days. So that gives us the protection we need against events like ransomware. Uh, let's see. Um, also part of the um, the being backups is adding backups for all of our key department heads and users. And then that's the, basically their email and their file backups. So Microsoft guarantees a pretty good backup of our system, but it's not guaranteed. So we had to add that extra piece. Sherman's also very um competent in Active Directory or Windows Active Directory. He's been able to basically make a few things, change some things which automate our, when we add new users and things like that. We also implemented what they call LAPS, which is basically every system has a local administrator. And a lot of those passwords were similar to each other. And so if somewhere, someone was able to hack our network, once they know one password, it gets some access to a lot of systems. And so now everything's unique and it actually changes randomly. So we have a way to look up the, the password that nobody else does. Um, and then Sherman was also very responsive. We actually had a email compromise event, which it was, we, we took it pretty seriously because it was right around the time of the election, it was prior to the election. And uh, so we, we went through a lot of extra steps to basically figure out why that, why that happened and then put in place measures so that can't happen anymore. So. But yeah, Sherman spent, I think he was here almost twenty-four hours. And then we've had, just we continue with other GI or other IT projects. Uh, one of the things we've been working with is multi-factor authentication. And one of the new technologies we're working with is called security key or physical key. And so this is called an UBA key. Basically, you can pass that around. So it takes replacement or it kind of replaces a password, but, but it adds some layers of security. So you have to physically be there, have it inserted in your computer, get a PIN number or a password, and you have to physically touch it from time. And you have to physically touch it from time to time to log in.
Or you haven't clearly touched.
Yeah, you touch that little key. And so we're just in the process of implementing those.
Are all of our computers compatible with that?
Yep, yep. And they actually work with cell phones. So you can put that behind the cell phone and use the RFID technology to scan it. And so we actually got those free through a statewide project at Iowa State. And so all of our key users, anybody that had a business need for. Security in their email can get one of those. And so we're starting to tie that. First, we're going to tie it to email security and then it'll be Windows login and. Various other layers as well, so. We've got a, a great partnership with the state of Iowa, uh, Security Operations Center. So they helped us implement our CrowdStrike or endpoint protection. We've been expanding our, our network in general and.
Some of those are required for elections personnel, but since we were. Getting on board with my office, why not implemented countywide? So that is, that has been handy.
Yeah, yeah. We've been trying to expand the network out to kind of the satellite offices. So those would be our secondary road offices, those small offices with just a few people in them. Uh, and conservation offices. And the primary benefit we're getting there is uh, void telephones. So they won't have to spend. A monthly fee on, on having a telephone that they would pay for. We'll just add them to our county system. And so. In general, I mean, those bills run anywhere from seventy-five to a hundred dollars, but. You know, we can easily say fifty dollars a month, you know, per line. And there's probably at least. A dozen or so lines that can be able to work into our system. Uh, we still got a, a good partnership with RightWay Technologies. So RightWay is located here in Decora and Tyler Wright has been helping us. We found that we didn't have a lot of standardization and so. And documentation. So that's something we've been working on for the last couple of years. And it sounds trivial, but. Everything is very detailed in nature. So once you set up a process, you know, there's usernames and passwords and protocols and port numbers and. All these things are designed and built very specifically. And so uh, they've been helping us with that. Uh, they're just a few examples of what we've been implementing there. And then we've got just little ongoing projects. And one of the things we implemented. Recently was recording the board supervisor meetings. And again, that sounds somewhat trivial and sounds easy, but. On the other side of things, it, it gets complicated because we want to be very professional in how we do that. And there's a lot of rules. Not rules, but. We don't have any technology staff news that says, oh, we didn't get that done for you this, today. So. Just a lot of preparation that goes into that every Monday. And Fatima and uh, Sherman's been doing it now that Fatima's on vacation or on leave, but. Fatima's kind of the glue that holds that together every Monday. So. She comes in and tests everything and make sure it works and then make sure the recordings are available. So. Um, I guess that kind of sums up. What we've been working on.
I have a quick question. The um. Remember when they came in and did a, on a survey or researched our whole system and then gave us our, our report card? With what we've implemented and the hiring of new uh, health. How do you think that report card would look today?
Oh, I, I think it would look a lot better.
I hope so.
Yes, very much so. Um. It's, it's by adding that extra person and with all the experience that Sherman brings to the organization. Like I said, it's allowed us, he concentrates on the, on the things that can make the whole system go. Um, it just gives us the time and flexibility to, to get those things done more quickly. You know, so I would say in general, if, if someone puts a ticket in with our help desk, we probably have that. We try to get it done the same way it comes in. And a lot of times it gets done or dealt with in minutes. So I mean, our response time is much more. Effective.
How many tickets would you say you do a week?
Um.
Countywide?
Probably that thirty to sixty range. I mean. There's, there's certain departments that just have more tickets than others. And we've added some really, I would say a lot of the new employees that have been added in the last year come with some good technology skills too.
So maybe you'll see reduction over, over time. In that need.
So the budget uh, is fairly similar to last year. We've added, I kind of kept everything the same. We've got some bigger renewals coming up at the end of this year. So our No Before. Training, security training software is going to come due. We're also trying to do a better job of uh, patching our systems. So the CrowdStrike system that the state offers us. We get a, basically a weekly report where it's showing where our systems are efficient. So we're trying to do a better job of patching uh, software, that system. Uh, so we might be looking at a different vendor there. The engineer's office or secondary road system also has a camera project. We've been kind of working with them on. Um, that system was put in about seven or eight years ago. And it seems like the cameras themselves are. Coverings. They weren't necessarily designed to be outside, we found. So that camera system is in for an upgrade. And so that might be something that the engineer might kind of talk to you about, but. We're looking at, we're looking at actually, you know, doing upgrades at all the remote sites. And that was. That, that project could be upwards of forty thousand. So it's not, it's not a small project. And then uh, up in the, where our data center is located at the law center, I've got a, an HVAC project that's ongoing there. And we estimate that at about fifteen thousand dollars. So right now that, that area seems to overheat a lot. So uh, in order just to keep the equipment cool, um, we're in the process of working with Caspers on uh, HVAC upgrading there.
Would it be beneficial to move it up here and have centralized?
Um, everything right now, all the networking gear is actually. You know, configured to work in the law center. And it's actually a very secure place, you know, because you have to go through the, the jail to get there. Um, and of course they have somewhat better generating, standby generators at that facility. And then being that law enforcement is kind of our priority need. We, we just can't have the dispatch center ever without. Capabilities, so. It was a good, good fit to have it there. And I think originally, or maybe eventually, you know, maybe we would look at. Something. Maybe not at a county building, you know, maybe at one of the cell sites or something, but.
For the long term for the counties that we don't want any of that.
Right, yeah, the flood plain. That's the biggest drop down, so.
Location may be above the flood. Flood line, but part of it is.
So I'll be available for, if you have any questions about the budget. I know things are tight. And you know, once you do the final, or the first run through, I mean. We'll just have to look hard at where we are concentrating our efforts. So we need to pull back a little. We can do that. Your P? Yes, I don't want to lose that. Do you have any questions for me?
No.
Good change, good changes been made last couple of years.
Yeah, yeah, excellent team.
Other counties are a little shocked at their report cards when we look at them too. Yeah. Feel bad about what ours look like.
We're never ending battle, you know, things are always.
Going to bring them back, going to bring the team back for another, for another look see?
It'd be interesting, wouldn't it?
Yeah, it would be interesting to see.
Yeah.
I know, I talked with other counties and they're, they're jealous that we have on. On staff, IT people, because a lot of them contract with outside entities and they pay a lot. Very high dollars per hour rates and they don't get results in very timely manner. And so. Yeah. We have the solutions that provides our, our programmings that we use for our daily. Propping and transaction also provides IT services to some county and it just they. They're overstretched basically on their ability to provide and they're on, not on site and it's just, it's hard to. Do that. So we're very lucky to have on staff.
Yeah, and we've, we've heard every, every now and then we hear of a situation where. Sometimes it even involves the dispatch center and law enforcement where there was a compromise. And then they start looking at their backups and they won't have everything they need to get back and running, so. We take it pretty serious.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Next on the agenda, Mike Cuddy, county engineer.
Yes. Uh, long day. Speaking of the uh. Cameras that he was talking about, I have all those right here. I'm going to look at those quotes I have them written. Um, one of the questions since we're transitioning here. Want to make sure that we're not violating the use of uh, county funds if, if. IT has, you put the cameras in their budget and not us putting it in our budget. Um, so that's, that was one question we wanted to double check on. Um, and then another reason for why this came to be was because the cameras uh. That we have. Uh, we're. We're not showing up at our uh. Our courthouse location, didn't get the camera feeds. And this was um, due to uh, call it expired. I don't know how to describe it exactly, but basically we are non-compliant with uh, the. With the federal government regulations on, on these cameras. They don't have the support that they need. And so between that and then the fact that uh, the camera lenses. Were. Just blurring things out. We just, we just need a replacement. So this. So. That's kind of the, the genesis of why we started developing this uh.
The non-compliance issue has to do, at least my understanding and. Break in, but has to do with where they're manufactured and if they're out of the country, then make sure there isn't built in.
Oh, China.
Have access from those other.
Yeah.
Countries into that system when you haven't verified the manufacturing of them, so.
Yes, and that's, and that's nothing that we can really help on that. So it's just. So good. That just makes the network connectivity not work. So uh, the. The cameras still work, but we'd have to pull the, the hard drives they have. So. Anyway, that's, that's not something intended to report on, but because. John had brought it up, uh, I figured I'd follow through on that. Um, so. Not a lot of news to report on this week. Uh. We are uh, finalists for the RACE grant. I've been trying to get information uh, regarding on letters of support to, for that RACE grant. Um, anybody have any ideas as to who I should reach out to to push that W fourteen south of Fort Atkinson? Uh, I would take those names and try to ask them to sign a uh, letter of support for that.
For officials or residents or what are you looking?
Uh, it'd be business, it'd be businesses, uh, you know, I could call it prominent residents of some sort.
Or like a mayor of Fort Atkinson or a county council person or something.
We've reached out to several of them already, but if you have any other additional ideas, uh, I might. Is that?
There's two large derries on that.
Okay, and you got probably the Ford, Ford co-op, the. Farmers win in Ridgeway, yeah, MEMS strucking their MEMS would be, yeah, I would say. If we can get, maybe I might pull from your list afterwards. Can't write very fast.
Yeah.
So um, I'd be encouraging you to let me know on that so that I can work to, to get them to sign that. The, the MOU, uh, this is a slight, uh, this is an amendment that just changes the, the responsibility over to us, the bridge inspection. Uh, on the shared bridge uh, in. Canton, I think it's Canton Township.
You have that MOU here that we can make an action on it. Okay, it's right there.
I move to approve the second.
I have a motion in a second to approve the memorandum of understanding between. Fillmore County, Minnesota and Worshe County, Iowa and Canton Township, Minnesota. Is there any further discussion?
That'd be on the bridges between, just the one bridge, yeah, there's one bridge between Iowa and Minnesota.
They mentioned it to me last week.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post and sign.
Um, and then. Since the board, after the board meeting had started, I sent my latest version of the, the budget. I wasn't going to send that until next week and. And so nothing's officially final on that. I have a couple of things that I want to nail down beforehand. But I know that you all are working very hard on the budget and just wanted to give you some at least preliminary numbers on that. So that was sent to you a couple of hours ago. Uh, bridge inspection consultant Chuck Britson, uh, met with uh, staff on Thursday last week. Uh, fortunately, there was no major developments discussed. Oftentimes we close bridges sometimes. Um, for the railcar plat bridge uh, study coordination occurred, we received a um. Draft. Uh, contract from Iowa State. Um, working with the uh. Department of Transportation to make sure that that will be sufficient. Um, so. Stay tuned on that.
Good question, mate. Is this really what this study is going to allow us to do is give a better. Better number of what the value of those bridges, the railcar bridges are as we go forward. What had a conversation have with Daryl Smith, the assistant engineer, assistant engineer up in. He was, he was saying that, you know, they don't, they don't rate them hardly. With any real value, maybe six thousand pounds or something like that. For six ton.
So what this does, we have. Effectively two different types of railcars. And um. The, the two railcars, the kind of railcars that we have. One, we had uh, load tested in the county. The other types have been load tested elsewhere. Um, it is. Because they have slightly different uh, span lengths and then the, the plate underneath is slightly different. I was talking to Chuck Britson when they were saying. That it needed to be identical. Um, to something else that is corroborating with the state. And so. Our bridges don't quite fit that, but they're close. And I'm trying to nail down the, the, the need and that these studies will in fact. Provide us, uh, I'll call it liability coverage type of thing. So that we are trying to do diligence and making sure that those bridges are. Safe for the public good. Um, they don't, as far as. Um, they don't, as far as Minnesota, I can't speak to their regulations, but saying six thousand pounds.
No, or six ton.
Six ton bridge, um, my guess is that they wouldn't allow just a, a. A load study like that, I think that the state of Iowa is gonna be a lot, this is a state thing and, and um. I would say that. Without knowing why Minnesota is doing that, they just don't wanna accept, the, the DOT does not wanna accept that liability.
So we're really, this is a preventive measure.
Correct, I just, I don't feel comfortable having that outstanding, um, and I'm wanting to make sure that uh. All of our bases are covered. Um, the preliminary number, if you, if, if you want a number is twenty eight thousand for this uh, the study. Is what they, the contract, su- suggested contract is, and that's to do two load studies.
With liability claim with, with that in perspective.
So, um, that's what I'm dealing with, uh, again, it's a lot, there's a lot, I'll call it. I am this guy, cause I don't, the person that we used to work with, that, that we used to work with is different than. Person now, so we're, and the, the people that did this for Iowa State back, back when we had our original one done. Are different now, so we're kinda dealing with a little bit of a loss in translation. Yep. But I, everything's going, I'd say, pretty good. Uh, subdivision stuff, I will get that uh, as soon as I can. As soon as I can, um, you, upcoming union negotiations, I just got an email from Johnny Anderson as, as this meeting was going on. Talking about end of the month.
Twenty seven, twenty eighth, I'm pretty.
That's what he had said, I can't be there on the twenty seventh, so.
That's on Monday, I think.
Yeah, that is on a Monday, that's when the race grant is a coordination meeting I have. Um. FEMA's, that's the UEI number, we're still working that out. Uh, originally shop improvements, uh, most improvements are construction, wall installation has been installed. Uh, the, the inside ten is being put up and boiler installation is to follow. Um, we will coordinate the boiler installation with the heating contractor. And then there's nothing, there's nothing new on the SS four A, right, that, that's gonna happen in March, so. The news for me.
In your office, that's a, for a little bit later.
Yes, I'd like you and Mark possibly uh, right after, if that's okay, Mark.
And now we have a few miscellaneous items, first of which is campus of the January seventh, twenty twenty five special election.
Winner, that's the important thing to report.
Not by a lot.
It's true, but.
Interestingly, more people voted in this election.
Yeah. Yeah, that's true.
Think about a third ones.
Please, though. Already had a lot of calls and emails and activities associated with the. Electric utility elections. Be here, we'll be here before we know it, in a month, we'll be voting in a month. Um, so I have the results here and uh. Three different certificates, signatures and actions of. To approve or uh certify the results.
Motion to approve the certification of the election results.
Motion second, certify the result, the election results from January seventh, twenty twenty five. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
These two are all five of your signature, this one is just the chair of responsibility. March fourth, uh, election dates will have, obviously the municipal electric utility election is the big one, but the. It's also postville, meaning school district election that day and I haven't done anything for. Ordering ballots and stuff yet, cause I want the fourteen day period to pass on. Appointment of Tim Smock as the county treasurer, that's a fourteen day time when that could get petitioned for a special election, which would then. Any wide thing on that same date, so we're trying to just make sure we have all of the elections that are happening that day. Identified before I start ordering ballots or anything, so.
All right, next up on the miscellaneous, accept, file and publish the treasurer's semi-annual report.
I emailed this out so you could review it ahead of time, it was something that Brenda created before um, one of her last actions. Images forwarded to me, um, still have Brenda's name on it since she created it.
Move to approve the treasurer's semi-annual report.
On second bet. Have a motion and second to accept, file and publish the treasurer's semi-annual report, we've made a discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I thought I needed on that one.
Okay. Um, next up, accept, file and publish the employee gross wage report, which will send out to us.
Yep, I emailed that one out, just a reminder, this is basically, this is the what's reported on their W twos. So it includes everything, whether it's overtime or the longevity pay or uh. Uh, the shift differential pays and everything are all included in there, anything that those people were paid. This last year, calendar year, it's not a, we do it as a calendar year, you can do it either calendar or fiscal year, we've always sent a calendar year. Um, and a reminder, like when you're thinking about wages and fund, this includes all employees across all departments. Though it's including road employees as well, which is a big chunk, with about third of them pay is road. Apartment pay and so on, so um, it's everybody.
I would move to accept, file and publish the employee gross wage report.
Second. Have a motion in a second to accept, file and publish the employee's gross wage report, we've made a discussion.
Is that the statistics that are turned into the paper for publication?
Yes, yeah, this is the report that's sent to the paper, yes.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 As opposed, same sign. Next up, we have recycling update. With the job description review and position planning.
I had Lynn sent out, she had made a couple of small changes to the recycling supervisor. Job description at the request, the committee that's working on that, adding a. Minimum of two-year direct supervisory experience and a class A CDL requirement, so. Um, with your approval, we would uh, make that change to this position.
I move to approve the job description review.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to accept the job description review. Um, one reservation I have is, we had very little applicants the first time and now we're making new restrictions.
We still have, we have still.
I mean, it's just a concern that I have looking at it, but.
One, one of the things I think we found out of, out of uh, our last, was called our last go around, was that we didn't. We saw a weakness of not having the supervisory aspect there listed and really making that as a sure review in that business. Uh, the other is the idea that we really want to have the flexibility. To have the CDL requirement, so that if we have a situation where somebody's out there, we've got, somebody can step in. And it's possible that down the road, perhaps this, the model may want to change, where there's a rotation between drivers and floor and the rest of that. Similar to what the, what the landfill does, which is better on employees. And then there's also the aspect of cross-training, then it makes it a better, a better flowing organization and probably much more efficient, would you agree, Mark?
Yeah, I think also. Long-term going down the road for the managers to have that is that. We maybe, if we decide to contract things out or run a smaller operation or be a transfer station, obviously you want. That person will also that truck.
Um, one question I have is, if class A versus class B, the current drivers are class B. CDL because we don't have any tractor trailer, but air, air brakes is separate. Class A difference between class A, class B is tractor trailer versus straight car.
Yeah, we've had situations in the past where they had to use the road departments trailer to go and pick up. And of course, then they have no one, a limited number of people who can handle that additional driving responsibility.
You know, one thing we definitely, city of Washington, we hired people, we give them a certain amount of time to acquire that CDL.
And it's interned in here, possession of or ability to readily obtain a valid. Class A CDL, so they don't have to have it to get hired, they just have to.
Add a time for any of them.
Six months.
We have six months, that's what.
Yeah, I. I guess I wouldn't, you know, I mean, we don't, probably not that, is it class A or is it just air brakes, I mean. We could put class A preferred, but minimum. The air brake.
Last, yeah, I think. Class B with air brakes required, class A preferred.
I would, maybe that would leave us a little more flexibility and, yeah. But like a lot of the people we looked at did have their class A, but.
But we did have.
So I, I think.
In the pipeline right now that will have, that have class A's.
If you got a couple there, I mean, everybody know, I mean, you have somebody. If we, if we had, I mean, it's more important for the other drivers probably to have it than the manager in some respects.
I do like that we're requiring that they have it or that they can obtain it, because they're gonna do supervisor out there.
I think maybe we could just drop that to me, but. It's a little more flexibility and if down the road they need to get the A, then that's part of what the job, I.
So are we all agreeing, because as it's written, I think we're okay, it leaves the, the option open, we need to add the deadline on time.
This is probably, is probably why I, I think I agree with Dan from the perspective, let's put a time. Frame on it so it doesn't just linger. I mean, six months is pretty reasonable, all they have to do is go over to Bay or Mason City.
I, I would agree with six months.
And if you go over there, they're gonna get you the A and air brakes and everything and.
Yeah, there's no difference.
So we, I don't see a problem with, if somebody's gonna go over there.
We have to get them.
Go ahead and get it all, then we're, then we're covered, no matter what.
Readily obtained within six months, valid class A CDL driver's license.
And obviously, if there's some issues come up that they can't get it down, we can make.
This does say issued by the state of Iowa, do you, I mean, if you had someone that lives in Minnesota that wants to apply. Do you really need that in there, because it's a, the CDL requirements are the same.
As a DOT uh issue. Probably that.
It's federally regulated, what's a class A versus a class B, so maybe just. Possession or ability to readily obtain within six months a valid class A CDL driver's license.
Cause you may live in Minnesota and not have.
Yeah.
Or Wisconsin.
So our motion in our second goes back to with the changes.
I approve what the change is made.
I approve.
Can you wanna read those changes just one more time?
I think, I think we're taking out this end of it, so it's possession or. Possession of or ability to readily obtain within six months a valid class A CDL driver's license.
You can even eliminate the word readily.
Ability to obtain, take readily out.
It's kind of redundant with the six month.
So if someone has a, really you're. It's saying they're gonna do it within six months, but if they have some sort of medical condition or prior record that restrict, that. Restrictions them from not obtaining a CDL, then they shouldn't bother applying, because they can no longer obtain it.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Supposed.
A little echo out publication.
Try to get it in this week. Yep.
That'll be online too.
Yes.
Two weeks.
Two weeks is the minimum, yep.
My question, in all of our discussion on this right now, what do we need to make sure we, we have in place? Whether that be Mark and Steve together or contract with something else to have somebody in a supervisory role between now and the time we hire somebody.
We've had discussions as recent as last night, here at the MX, over that very thing. And I'd say, give us another week to respond back to that. Maybe we can have a better, have a clearly defined track to run on them.
I mean, you have a current director supervisor there. It's just he is uncomfortable with some of the duties, so it's some additional help that you're planning to.
Oh, I'm actually doing that legally.
Yeah, and we have, there's some other issues that we need to discuss, was probably not appropriate now, but discuss with Andy Mark, I will.
Thank you. Things are looking good.
Are the uh.
That's good.
Is the pain reflecting the position that she's taken over for?
Uh, if we use a temper, if we use one of, one of the uh, the current staff. To fill that role, it would be limited to the floor. And all of the office work paperwork and that kind of responsibility was, would continue with Evan. So that we keep a focus on things that are related to what's happening inside that processing part of the building. And keep them working there and not out on, not in the office. Um, there's been issues in the past, when that's been abused and we don't wanna continue with that. Uh, I think it's probably wise, we may even need to monitor the cameras down there. And that's been, that's a possibility uh, that we discussed internally.
For the sake of moving forward, I think it's a good system in place and that. Um, we'll go back to offering. One employee, the same as we did in Scottsdale, until we get a new manager in place.
That's kind of one of.
And then the other. The other one that we kept at the same rate until we.
This is what we've previously done.
And for the community that's still online, I know the, our room is empty here, but um. It's come up to my attention from citizens asking me, are we getting rid of recycling, the recycling center, our answer. From this whole board is resounding no, we're not getting rid of recycling, so that, that rumor can be put to rest.
Change is inevitable, but elimination is, you know, it's not terminal.
Not, we're not doing that, so.
All right, is there anything else?
And just so everyone knows, you have, the, the committee has asked, and we sent it to the paper to have published. Request for proposals to. Request for proposals to haul the bins in the interim, from, from now till the end of June. Since we're having a shortage of drivers and not. So that's an option is to, to hire that out and see what those proposals come back.
So the, yeah, we have hauling the rural waste bins, two separate contracts.
Two separate contracts.
And then going back to the original model where all of the bin hauling was contracted out. For recycling as well now as rural waste. That's not saying we're gonna go with either one of those necessarily, but when the bids come in, we'll be able to have a better idea.
Decide if that's worth, and the contract is only set up to be from now till the end of June, it's a short term fix, so they're thinking.
So, and if, maybe that would be going forward, best option too, but we don't believe that to be. Well, we'll see.
Yeah, we think, we think there's better efficiency if it's all combined and comes from in-house. I think there may be some need of making some adjustments for some services that we're providing to individual. Individual bins out, that not different than when we're collecting in the rural area or the cities. And that we probably, uh, need to have a discussion of charges that should be made for that service to continue. Uh, because previously all of those entities were paying for, uh. Right, the private sector to do the very same thing and bring them down and dump them, so we're, uh, it's, it's probably a. It's not, I wouldn't call it a fair scenario when our taxpayers are subsidizing those entities that. Where we, where they used.
Right now about four of our bins are private.
Servicing private entities.
We need to be looking at fees for that.
And I don't know that the board ever approved that, and so, but Emily's is, uh, a little bit out of the scope of what the taxpayer should be doing.
So, agreed, that's, uh, that's where we're moving with the, our new manager will be able to work with those.
There won't be any convenient, uh, relationships to do, somebody would pay around the taxpayer dollar.
I don't think that's within the scope of the director's responsibility to make those decisions, in my mind.
Anyway, it's a, there's great opportunities out there, and our, like I said, I think people are wanting, are you gonna, no, our. My feeling, and I think most people I hope, is that we will have our own, probably around recycling operation, because it's important to. Solid waste agency and whether she can.
County run.
That will be county run.
Yeah, I think another thing that to be, be encouraged by is that if you go out and see, but seeing at the site, we had some of the back here and so forth. A lot of areas have been cleaned up well, we've got some good transition done that way, that the shipping container that was there and really not used is now. Down next door to the Ford shop, and the road department is using it, the road department is in turn going to go out and help us by. Clearing that one side between the recycle center and the storage area, which is full of debris and dead trees. And some things like that, that are really kind of improving a lot of, even some of the physical plant, which is, I think, a real plus. We've got them, we've helped provoke getting some repairs done that were beneficial, some of them were reflected in that. What came through in payables today.
Fourteen thousand dollars worth of.
But it was stuff that was questionable as to, if it wasn't addressed, it could result in a safety situation that we don't want to have.
Anyway, it's a good operation, it's a good facility, so.
There's changes being made on the recent, the decommission recyclable type things we. Uh, temporarily, until we get everything situated better, where they're going to be taken to another location to be. Uh, decommissioned, we kind of got.
That's the previous model that we.
We're in compliance with D N I.
And then we've also, on the house, hazardous household chemi, and household chemicals, those have all been cleaned up and.
We had a great report on that.
Got a great report, we got a nice clean slate to start fresh this new year, and both of those areas, which is a real pulse.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Media, thanks for sticking around for the long haul over there. Hopefully, this is one of our long.
Ben's, Ben's kind of rough on us.
Yeah, this was one of the longer.
You figure out where we're gonna get that eight, two thousand stretch.
Well, that should very well be.
Be shooting an email later with some questions.
Okay.
Pretty easy stuff, probably. Then. Funding to, funding requests to.
What are you looking for? I bet you need to go to the courthouse, but we'll find out.
Is it a ticket?
Just please go over to the courthouse, Ben, you can tell him.
It's probably the clerk of court.
Second floor.
Fifth floor, that building right over there, the big one, yep, go upstairs, yep.
This is if you. Oh, no, I was. You can, I mean, if you want, we can. Um, so the sheriff's budget, he was. The document received from.
Yeah, they had emailed it ahead of time, so I'll have to forward that, because she wasn't here to answer that, so. She handed out, she did not email it that time, so that one I. It's more, it, she went from ten to fifteen.
Ten to fifteen. And, uh, let's see. Uh, any change for.
There are now only two supervisors left in the, in the meeting.
So the meeting can be ended.
Any change in, uh, what she can.
Sorry, the remote tools are, um, not working for me, so.
Oh, do we need to end it here?
Yeah. Let him do whatever, yeah, don't just hit leave.
I'm not gonna touch it. With my luck, I would mess it up.